Good evening and welcome, members of the public. Those who are virtual and those who are here tonight with us, thank you for being here. We are opening up the August 14th, 2024 Open Space Board of Trustees Meeting. My name is Michelle Estrella and I am the current board chair. Tonight's meeting will have a slightly different order for two reasons than usual. So for two reasons. One, we will be debuting the use of the consent agenda. This will allow us to potentially pass the consent agenda item regarding the regulation of horses and livestock. And I'll talk a little bit more later about that particular procedure. But the main reason why we have a different order is because we have some special guests with us tonight. Hello. And with the summer wrapping up, we will recap the Junior and Youth Ranger Program, which we'll do just after I call the roll. Good. All right. Trustee Glenn.
Present.
Trustee Robinson.
Present.
Trustee Zuckerman.
Right here.
And of course, I'm here tonight. Tonight, trustee John Carroll is unable to join us because he is on a work trip. Okay, so let's go on to the main event tonight.
Great. So we've got two matters from the staff department and we'll split them up. And we'll start with this first item, which is a very exciting item for us. It's, we love to do this, this time of year. For those of you who know, our Junior and Youth Ranger Program has a long tradition and they just wrapped up their season last Friday. And so it's an opportunity for us to provide a brief recap from a staff perspective, but more importantly, to hear from a few of the youth participants about their experience in those program areas. So I'm going to turn things right over to Natasha Steinman, who is going to sort of preside over this. And Natasha has a new title, Community Outreach Senior Manager? Yes. She was just promoted into that role a few weeks ago, so we're really excited for your elevated role within the department.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you, Board of Trustees, for having us tonight. We love bringing the party and bringing the youth voice to these board meetings. So today I have the pleasure, I am actually not presenting, I'm just introducing, but I have the pleasure of introducing two of our Junior Ranger Program senior coordinators. Both of these ladies have been in their roles for the past two years, but have numerous years of experience with open space and mountain parks. And so they will be presenting on behalf of the Junior Ranger Program tonight. So first, we have Sarah Hosey.
Hi. Thanks for having us tonight. I'm super excited to share with y'all some of our updates from this summer. My name is Sarah Hosey. I'm one of the program coordinators. And yeah, tonight we have just a few things we'll go through, just how we're focusing on the master plan implementation, how hiring is going for the program, our project and crew highlights. And then we will invite Hannah Pritchard up to talk about the Youth Ranger Program. And we have three of our junior rangers here to talk tonight. Great. So master plan implementation and priorities. We work hard to make sure that we are incorporating as many of the tier one and tier two strategies in what we do. We partner with many of the work groups at open space and mountain parks. So trails, forestry, veg management, wildlife, ecological restoration, the Rangers, agriculture, and excited to be working with climate resilience more through our climate crew. And we also partner with education and outreach. So through the Junior Ranger Program, we help to welcome diverse backgrounds and abilities to our open spaces. We help to connect youth to the outdoors, as well as inspiring environmental literacy and new involvement with our open spaces. So some of our focus areas for 2024, trying to focus on projects with a lasting impact on our trail system. Prioritizing community service and education while teaching resilience and leadership to our crews and crew leaders. So here's some photos from the summer. We have a trail crew in the upper left-hand corner, working on the new Saddle Rock Trail. We have a crew on the middle bottom, who are chipping trees with our forestry crew. So they get to go out every single week with forestry to help reduce some of their workload and learning professional skills. Sorry about that mistake. So they get to learn skills like teamwork and communication while on the job. Great. So part of the Junior Ranger Program, we really value our partnerships. So some of the ways that we connect with the community are through our partnership with Nature Kids Boulder, Climate Crew. So we partnered with CU and Climate Initiatives. Career Day, we invited professionals to come out and talk with the youth about their jobs, their career paths, and Bike to Work Day, so involving more sustainable or encouraging more sustainable choices. And then volunteer projects that we do throughout the season, as well as into the fall, to involve the community. And then our partnership with Youth Services Initiative. So hiring and master plan implementation. We had a record number of applications this year. Two hundred and fifty-two applications for 112 positions is quite a bit. This is a record number since 2018. So we've kind of recovered, we definitely have recovered since the pandemic. The applicant pool is highly motivated. It helps us to hire a diverse group. And I think this really speaks to our outreach effort, as well as our partnerships with other organizations that we've been able to get the word out about the program. Great. So a little more on welcoming diverse backgrounds and abilities. This is one of our priorities. We have continued our efforts with equitable hiring. It's our fourth year working with Nature Kids Boulder, who help us to reach the Latino community in Boulder. And our third year with a bilingual coordinator position, so that we have the ability to support youth who are not an English-speaking first language. So to show kind of some of the progress that we've made in hiring a more diverse group, you can see we have our 2021 data, our 2022 and 2023. Slow change, but it is improvement. It is increased diversity. And so we'll continue to strive in this effort to make sure that we're hiring a diverse program. Projects and crew updates. So I have a few highlights that I want to talk about. First, I'd like to highlight the climate crew, like I've talked about or mentioned previously. So our climate crew this year partnered with a PhD student at CU to participate in a project that is more long-lasting than anything they've ever participated in. So they were able to collect data and acquire skills and kind of see what it's like to be a field ecologist. Sorry. I would like to highlight our project on North Sky. So we were one of the first crews last year to actually break ground for the trail. And then this year, our crews helped to wrap up the work on North Sky. It was a difficult, challenging experience, really hot trail to work on, but overall really rewarding. And my last highlight is on our work on Mesa Trail this summer. The crews worked on the entire Mesa Trail, which is, you know, one of the trails that really connects our system and just helped to reduce maintenance backlog and improve those conditions throughout, learning new skills and teamwork. So I will pass it off to Hannah.
Awesome. Thanks, everyone. Hello. I'm Hannah Pritchard. I was a senior program coordinator for Youth Rangers this year. I have a long history with the program. I was a junior ranger for three years and then a crew leader for three years. And this is my second year coordinating for the program, so I really love it, which hopefully will come across as I present on this. So the first thing I want to go over is what is Youth Ranger Crew? I think they get conflated with the Junior Ranger Program a lot, and for kind of good reason. They're both programs that focus on youth development, focus on instilling skills of conservation and stewardship. And the Youth Ranger Crew really highlights the experience of park rangers. And so our goal is to expose youth rangers to all the different career paths, particularly oriented toward getting folks involved and interested in becoming park rangers and full-time stewards of the land. So we focus a lot of our curriculum around particularly skills-based training around natural resource management and preservation. We connect with a lot of external partners to help our youths explore career paths in conservation and ecology. And then we place a really heavy emphasis on helping youth rangers develop positive connections with members of law enforcement and other positions of leadership and authority in our community to hopefully empower them to become leaders in their schools, in their universities, for those that go to college, in their careers, for those that go straight into the workforce. Yeah. So a primary component of our program are the service projects that we have our youth rangers engage in. This top photo, I'll go over a little bit more in depth, but this is our youth rangers putting on their very own educational program for members of the public, which they did a great job at. This middle photo, we were up at the CU Mountain Research Station, helping them steward some of their trails and then also attending some of their lectures on ecology. And then finally, down at the bottom, we were working with Esoterra Farms, helping the youth rangers learn about sustainable agriculture practices and then also helping with their harvest. Another really important component of this program are our community partnerships and outreach. This is a photo of us over at Boulder Police Department, the youth rangers learning about the different vehicles that they have. And we work really hard in order to cultivate a lot of these relationships, which I'll get into. We collaborate with over 50 individuals from 30 different organizations. Some of these organizations change from year to year, but this is just to kind of give you a picture. One huge component of Rangers and their job is rescue and EMS. And so we work specifically with partners who have involvement within those fields. We've seen several of our youth rangers go on to obtain their EMT certifications. We have one former youth ranger right now who's working in women's health as a member of the Peace Corps. We have several who've gone on to have other jobs in healthcare, and this is a huge part of that. And on the left is Anna, who you'll be hearing from. She's practicing stopping, I think that was ketchup or paint or something wound that we set up. Next up is law enforcement and fire. So this is another important component of the ranger job. And so we partner with, again, BPD, the Boulder Rangers, BVSD, and then Search and Rescue Dogs of the United States, in order to provide a pretty comprehensive exploration of careers in law enforcement. We have several members of our program who are going on to hopefully get post-certified and get more involved in law enforcement. So it tends to be a pretty impactful component of this program as well. And then last, but definitely not least, is conservation and ecology. So these are the numerous partners that we work with on conservation and ecology. I just want to point out Cowood, for example, we've had a longstanding relationship with them, particularly after the numerous fires that have impacted them, helping them with wildfire restoration. And we also have some pretty longstanding relationships with the CU Mountain Research Station, as I said. And we have another former youth ranger who's actually at UC Berkeley, completing her PhD on research that she got involved with through this program. So the last kind of thing that I want to highlight is the educational program that the youth rangers put on. And this was their primary service project. They were working on it throughout all four weeks. We had them learn from other members of OSMP about how to deliver educational programs, and they worked really hard to collaboratively be able to deliver this program. And it ended up being on a super smoky day, one of those days where everything just kind of got trapped down here in Boulder. And we still had great turnout, still had a lot of fun, and they got to kind of see their curriculum take shape. I won't read all of these quotes out loud, but this is just to give you an example of the impact that this program has on youth and the impact that it has on our young ecologists, our youth rangers. The folks that are pictured down on the far left is Melinda. She was one of the rangers who originally spearheaded this program. And then to her, I guess would be her left, is Fiona, who I mentioned, who's currently in the Peace Corps. And then Brooke, who is our former youth ranger, who's at UC Berkeley now, both of whom came back to the program many times and I think are great testaments to just the way that it is able to impact people's life trajectories. For more details on the program, please go to our website. It's at osnpjuniorrangers.org. Information on junior rangers and on youth rangers is housed on that site. And you can also reach out to Natasha, who's almost not our program manager anymore, but still a very great well of knowledge on the program. And anything to add before I pass it off? Great. So tonight you'll be hearing from, I know that this is everyone's favorite parts, they're always waiting with bated breath for us to stop talking, but we've got three of our members of the Junior Ranger Program and the Youth Ranger Program who are here to kind of express their own testimonies. So I'll pass it off. Pardon? Yeah, I guess first we'll hand it off to Anna, who is a youth ranger.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Anna. I was a youth ranger. It was, yeah. My experience as a youth ranger was genuinely one of the most eye-opening and amazing experiences I've ever had. My family was never really the most outdoorsy at all. We were never like the hikers, we were never the campers. So I always wanted to be able to really experience the outdoors in a way that my family really couldn't offer. And when I heard about this program, I applied for it kind of on a whim. I was really just like, well, if I get it, I get it. And if I don't, then it'll be fine. But when I heard I landed it, I was genuinely so excited. And I do firmly believe it was one of the best things to ever happen to me. Going in to the program, I was very nervous. I was scared that I wouldn't like it. Although I've always been interested in being part of the outdoors and having a career in conservation as a park ranger or something along the lines of that, I was scared that if I did this program and I didn't like it, then I wouldn't know what I wanted to do with the rest of my life. But luckily, just the four weeks were genuinely just a wonderful experience for me. Every single day, I came into work happy to do whatever we were doing that day, whether it be the day we went up to Cowood to do like restoration logging, where we would like go through and we would take count of all the trees that were regrowing after the big fire there. Or the day we had our overnight trip to the Mountain Research Station, where we got to learn about picas and everything. Everything was just generally so interesting to me. And it has really given me that final push I needed to apply for schools and pursue careers in conservation. I've already written my college essay for just my common application, and I've mentioned youth rangers many times because of how much it had really made me want to pursue it even more. I came into the program very scared that it would make me want to flip my life around, but at the end, it made me only want to pursue my passion for conservation more. So, yeah. Thank you. And then Kian next? Yeah. Cool.
Hi, I'm Kian. I was, I am, was a part of the Junior Ranger Crew for four years. During that time, I have worked on several different projects. One project that stands out in my mind was setting rocks on, I think it was, I forget where we were, but I think it was Flagstaff. It was, the day was really hot and we were getting short-tempered. The rock wasn't setting and we had tried everything, but we really just had to persevere through it. And really, that's what Junior Rangers has taught me. You have to like really keep going and really like dig down and find that energy inside yourself when the going gets tough. Another thing it's taught me is you have to like learn and listen and communicate well. You can't go through Junior Rangers without communicating with your crew. It just isn't possible. One example of this was when I was setting steps and there was this, I was with this kid, and he was saying, I think we should restart. I don't think it's set right. And I didn't listen to him. I was really headstrong and I was saying, I don't, you know, no, it's fine. We can just keep doing this. So we went along with my idea and it turned out terrible. So we did have to go and reset and I, then I was learning that I don't have all the answers. I do need to listen to people. I need to understand where they're coming from and know that I don't know everything. And now I do try my best to incorporate everyone else's ideas, because really, that's what Junior Rangers is about, community. It's about helping you and helping you like grow and learn and be a better person. And like even though I was here for four years, it never got monotonous. It never got boring. It was always like something new and fun to do every, every day. Yeah. Thanks.
Thanks, Kian.
Hi. I wasn't as confident to just speak from my heart, so I wrote everything down. I'm now realizing it's quite a hefty speech, but I'll just, I'll just read it anyway. So my name's Tessa and I'm going into my senior year at Boulder High School, and I just graduated from the Junior Rangers Program after three years of service. And those who have known me for the past three years are not surprised to know that I'm a junior ranger, because when I ask about my summers, it's like kind of impossible for me to not talk about the Junior Ranger Program. But like, at the end of the day, I don't really think of this job as like a job, really. And that's not to say that I'm not, you know, working every day and not getting a solid job experience, but rather because I have found so much more in the Junior Rangers Program than just the paycheck I receive at the end. So to start, I'm convinced that Junior Rangers is the quickest way to suddenly gain nine new friends each summer. I used to suspect that it was maybe we all like trauma bonded over having to wear these t-shirts in public. But, and honestly, this is like the cleanest it's ever been too. So, but I've come to realize that it is actually the unique opportunity that Junior Rangers offers to befriend people that you probably would not have been able to befriend otherwise. And just by putting ten teenagers going into all four years of high school and from all walks of life into one crew together for a session, I'm always able to discover just how kind, interesting, funny, and valuable each and every personality is to the team. There's something about escaping the strict and messy social ladder of high school, about going without your phone for five weeks, that makes you able to laugh with just about anyone, really put yourself out there, and in my case, make friends that you will cherish forever. I've also found myself very lucky to have very approachable leaders. The crew leads and the coordinators are all people I truly admire. Rather than presenting themselves as intimidating or repressive, they have all become role models that I feel really excited to learn from. Their kindness, patience, and enthusiasm have all been very inspiring to me, so much so that I hope to be a crew lead like them someday. That is, once I learn how to drive. But so with these incredible friends and leaders by my side each summer, you may understand now why I so often forget that I'm being paid. I was never for a second miserable, even when I was clipping teazle in the hot sun and got exactly 30 mosquito bites all on my back in places that I cannot reach, or when I was cutting gumweed in the pouring rain and actually growing taller as more and more, more and more mud accumulated on the bottom of my boots. But I'm happy to report that I not only grew in height during my time with the Junior Rangers, but also in innumerable ways as a person, including in leadership, in planning for the future, and in my relationship with my city. We're on the second side of the paper now. In regards to leadership, Junior Rangers has been the perfect place to grow that skill. With the energy the program puts into teaching new things and giving constructive feedback, I've been able to actually see and feel myself developing to someone who can pass on knowledge of the work we do and the culture we want to continue to others in the program. And as a girl especially, I find this really significant. It's rare to find a place in which girls are given the opportunity to learn something as daunting and physical as trail work. And it is so empowering, being able to have the same amount of influence as our male peers in trying in technical projects. Being in an environment in which you can learn new things without fear of being judged and in which you can take charge of your own body to see just how strong you really are is such an amazing experience. And so just like, it's, it gets a lot easier when you're, you can contribute to problem-solving discussions, advocate for yourself, share what you know, and ask questions, which are all things that I improved upon during my time with the program. And then additionally, Junior Rangers has been a very important step in my planning for the future. Having tried not only trail work, but also projects under the topics of agriculture, vegetation, restoration, wildlife management, forestry, fire mitigation, and more, I've explored a large variety of responsibilities that are held in the OSMP department. And I've started gathering skills and passions that fuel me towards my interests in college and in future careers. The environmental educations too have taught me way more than I could ever learn in school. Most memorably, discussing and trying wheelchair-accessible trails with Topher, exploring the magical treasure that is White Rocks with Juanita, and playing with the Wildland's Fire Engine with the man, the myth, the legend, Dave G, have all been the perfect mix of exciting and fascinating. Lastly, the Junior Rangers Program has instilled in me immense pride in my city. We are encouraged to think about the trails we build as the hikers that will use them. And I think when put that way, it is so clear to see why our work is meaningful. And I think everybody in this room can agree that we are really, really lucky to have such, have access to such beautiful, complex, and biodiverse open space here in Boulder. And that's why I'm extremely grateful to have been able to call myself a steward of this land. And in the face of climate change, the Junior Rangers Program has so perfectly allowed my generation to fall in love with open space, to gain the tools and knowledge to protect it, and to realize that our mission does not end with the summer, but rather continues on with the actions we take for the rest of our lives. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Anna, Kian, Tessa, Sarah, and Hannah. Great job. At this point, I want to just open it up to any questions, if you all have any questions or things to say.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, questions and comments. Tessa, you did a great job. I wish you had a third page. You did mention some, gosh, that's so inspiring. You all did a wonderful job coming up to speak, and I just want to acknowledge that you worked really hard this summer. And it's not easy to come into this particular forum and speak in front of a group of people who are here, but also it's on YouTube forever, so just so you know. I don't know that they disclose that part, but it is unfortunately on YouTube forever. But yeah, so I just was wondering, I wanted to ask a question of each of you, and because you told a lot of wonderful stories. But reflecting back on your summer, I would just like to, if you know, if you could give us a sense for, if there was just one moment that during the summer that you're just most proud of?
I guess most memorable moment from like this summer would be, I mentioned it briefly in my huge speech, but is, we've had the really unique opportunity to have environmental educations at White Rocks out in like East Boulder. And since it's not a trail that's open to the public, it's only for the guided tours that they hold, it's someplace I've never been. And so I was really And so I was really, really interested to see the, and learn about it as well, because it's a really fascinating area. And so it just made me so excited that there was such a really, really cool place here in Boulder that's just so awesome. And so then I was, I just, I feel proud that I got to help out in sharing that place with others. I get to help make sure that it's, you know, spick and span for when people are coming to go tour it. And so that made me feel pretty proud this summer, I'd say.
The thing I say would be one of the most memorable and things I'm most proud of for this trip, trip, for my uh, four week session, was when we went to spend overnight at the mountain research station and we had um, we were doing some Trail Crew and there was this huge, there was this huge tree just in the way. And I was like, and we, and the whole crew was like, well, we gotta, we gotta find a way to get it out of the way somehow. So we devised a method of getting this huge tree out of the way. We put another tree underneath it and we had to lift it up. And it was something that the whole crew had to be a part of. And it took about forty minutes of lifting up a tree underneath it so we could lift up this tree enough that we could cut it down. So there was a lot of yelling, a lot of um people doing stuff that was like, they would walk underneath the tree that we were lifting up and then it would almost get dropped on them. It was terrifying experience. But I was really proud of the way that our little group was able to come together and just cut this tree in half. It's not as, as big as Tessa's, but it was just like a little moment I'm very proud of.
I love that, thank you. Oh my gosh. Kian?
Um, I think the um most memorable moment this summer was cutting cattails with a wildlife expert. Um, we were wearing gaiters and boots and the, the mud was just so terrible and we would keep falling and our uniforms were dirty at the end, to say the least. They're not yellow anymore. So, um, but it was quite an experience just looking back and seeing how much we cleared. And it was really just quite accomplishing and knowing that we were helping out the um ecosystem around the area.
Yeah, hopefully you've discovered bleach. It helps a lot of things. My, my, Kevin children, that's my favorite thing.
And I just want to add too, as the program manager, that from my own experience, and I don't know how many of you know this, but I was also a Junior Ranger as a high schooler. And I will say, some of my most memorable experiences also are the ones that were really, really, really hard, right? Those moments of adversity where the team came together and like maybe in the moment from a, from a youth perspective, you're like, this is so scary. Um, but with the right structures in place and like making sure that you're keeping, like doing a good job with safety despite the challenge, right? Rising to that occasion. And I think that makes such a big impact on youth when they're in this really transformative part of their lives, where they're kind of testing limits and trying to figure out how, like Tessa was saying, how strong I am, right? And so it was interesting that they all had things to share about that and about that exploration, so.
Great. Um, other, other comments and go for it, Harmon?
And Natasha, I'm sure that's that good um safety protocol, you know, that the team leader had was the reason why Anna doesn't know, but it's the reason why she still has all of her limbs and uh, and all the kids are okay.
There's multiple perspectives here.
So I'm just so impressed. I don't have any, um, I don't want to drag you guys up to the, the dais again unless you want to go up, but you, all three of you are just, each of you has brought to us such an amazing personal story. And um, and each of you has, has achieved some sort of incredible growth from, you know, Kian's humility to, you know, Anna's understanding of what she wants to focus on with her life to, you know, Tessa, I mean, that, I, I didn't know what to expect when you came up with, I could see how tiny your writing was, but I mean, you, you have totally taken, you know, this by the horns. And I'm just so impressed with you guys and also with, with uh, your bosses who are doing a great job too. So thank you very much for the, the presentation, everybody.
Thank you.
I was in, in charge of program safety at Outward Bound North Carolina for four and a half years, so I'm gonna resist any further jokes and prodding about the tree. But I'll just say this, I, I didn't, I, I learned some, the, the anecdotes are great. Thank you for taking the time to, to share your personal stories and to, and to speak in, in public about it. And I learned something tonight which I didn't realize, the extent to which this was just really a holistic experiential education experience. And um, yeah, uh, I've heard about everybody, you know, talking about the Junior Rangers and how incredible it is, but I've got a better handle on the substance and the depth of these experiences. And it's true, these, you know, having these kinds of experiences at this point in your life can, can completely change the trajectory and, and bring new talent and people who might not have otherwise self identified as, as conservationists or people who care about landscapes. So well done, everybody. Thank you for, for taking the time to share your stories.
Sarah, Sarah wants to say one. I, I will just second everything that you all have said. And also, um, there was a comment about uh, the, the future, realizing that these, uh, these trails, these mountains belong to you and the future belongs to you. And that just made my heart light up. I think that's a really important takeaway and some, it's a big part of why I'm here is to support the future. So thank you to the staff and the team for all of your work and great to meet you all. Thanks for your presentations. Good luck to you all. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you very much.
You don't have to leave, but you definitely can leave. We're gonna approve minutes. How exciting. I'd leave too. Okay. All right, so we, the next item is the approval of the minutes of the July tenth board meeting. Brady was absent during that time, um, or during that meeting. For, the, the minutes are um four pages. And as we normally do this, we'll just go um page by page. Are there any suggested changes on the first page? Seeing none, how about the second page? Okay, Harmon?
I've got mine sort of, it's the paragraph that goes from page two to page three, so I can, somebody else has a page two? No? Okay. So um, the paragraph that spans page two and three, bottom of two and top of three. I think we ought to make it clear in that uh, John Carroll said that um, they do not feel the need for a physical representation of the fort to be placed on this site. I think we need the words of the fort after a representation, because that's really all he was talking about right there. Do I remember correctly?
Yeah, it's correct.
Okay. You got that then, yeah, thank you.
Good catch, thanks, Harmon. Um, anything else on the third page? We have a couple of sentences on the fourth page. Okay, does anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Sarah? Present. Approved. Approved, sorry. And Harmon?
Yes, approved.
And I also approve of the minutes as amended. Okay, um, and, you know, Brady, I'm assuming you'll abstain. Okay, so next section is um, is public comment. This is a public comment for items that do not have a public hearing tonight. Tonight, we do have a public hearing for the 2025 OSMP capital improvement um and operating budget. So this is an opportunity to speak on any topic besides that, including consent agenda, I believe, um, regarding the regulation of horses and livestock. Sam, can you please read the rules of decorum?
Yes, thank you. Um, and before I start reading, um, if you have joined us in person tonight and you haven't signed up in advance on Advent Bright and you'd like to speak, um, as Michelle mentioned, there are two uh sections of public comment tonight. The first is the open comment for items not identified for public hearing. Um, and you can sign up on that table. That's what we'll be talking about first. And then later in the meeting, we'll have a public hearing item for the budget. You can sign up on that table on a separate sheet of paper as well. So um, I'll get started by reading these rules. So the city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and board commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, please visit this site. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use uh, other forms of intimidating, intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony, testimony is permitted online. And we do have um people joining us on their phones, so if you would like to raise your hand to speak and you're on the phone when we get to that section, you can press star nine. Um, if you are joining from a computer, you can either click the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or if you don't see that icon, you can click the uh, participants box at the bottom of the screen. You'll see the three dots and you can click the raise up hand icon there. Okay, so I will stop sharing now.
Thank you. And do you have some people signed up?
We do have three people signed up in advance, so we're gonna start with our list of participants who are, uh, who have signed up in advance. Um, so when I do call your name, uh, if you could come up to the podium and we'll have a timer ready for you to, uh, to, to speak. So the first, um, the first name that we have for uh, speaking tonight, I apologize. Oh, thank you. Uh, so the first that we have uh, to speak is Bart Windrum, followed by Giles Trauton, and then Andrew Feeny. So Bart, if you're ready, you can come up to the podium to speak.
Hi, my name is Bart Windrum. I'm a thirty-eight-year resident of Shanahan Ridge in southwest Boulder. My town home happens to be equidistant one point two miles from the inception points of the Marshall Fire, the Nkar Fire, and the Dinosaur Fire. And of course, we're directly downwind of the latter two. Tonight, I propose a suite of actions to address human-caused wildfire that directly threatens lives, properties, and insurability along Boulder's southwest boundary. My concern, directly combating human-caused ignition, seems inexplicably unaddressed by either the city or county CWPPs. The blue line protected our mountain backdrop from us. This proposal, named Boulder's Yellow Line, aims to protect ourselves from wildfires ignited by people on the backdrop. Boulder's Yellow Line would be the Mesa Trail. Both Nkar and Dinosaur ignition points were adjacent to and above it. Yellow Line specifies the hard closure of Mesa Trail based on any one of three triggers. Hard closure means closure designed with deterrence elements with which citizens, enforcers, and violators may reasonably expect the likelihood that violators will be apprehended, charged, and face the stiffest consequences. First, two points. Boulder's Yellow Line does not displace any other mitigation program effort or goal. And the hard closure of Mesa Trail would not close any lower trails, except for approaches both high and low necessary to secure Mesa Trail closure. Boulder's Yellow Line includes five elements. One, amending the city charter with a prioritized open space wildfire human ignition mitigation clause, conferring legitimacy upon applying the resources needed to implement it. Two, establish three triggers, any one of which would close Mesa Trail. Any stage Boulder County fire ban for its duration. Adverse weather forecasts and conditions that are locally relevant. And periods of resource, of resiliency resource depletion. Three, permanently install at Mesa Trail access and egress points substantial metal gates with locks and signage. Signs will also advise people that they are on camera. Four, installing multidirectional motion and tamper-sensitive cameras at each gate, alerting a command center in real time, enabling real-time deployment of a ranger or two, and using footage at-large violator apprehension. And five, enhanced violation penalties. Precedent exists for trail closures. Let's prioritize our own lives and property against the next inevitable human-sparked wildfire. Evacuating on moths down Lehigh and Greenbrier during a high-wind calamity is doomed to fail for some of us. I'm prepared literally to jump into Veely Lake if Greenbrier becomes impassable during a maelstrom.
Thank you, Bart. Um, your, your time is up, but we do have your document here. We really appreciate it.
Yes.
And, and we'll finish reading that. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Giles Trauton, followed by Andrew Feeny.
Good evening, trustees. Uh, my name's Giles Trauton. I'm here tonight to recommend that this board take urgent action with regard to the wildfire risk along Flagstaff Road. Doesn't appear that current approach you're taking is really working very well. So I'll briefly touch on history, current situation, and a couple of recommendations. So this is a county road that's traditionally been managed not by the sheriff or BPD, but OSMP. That's my understanding. That's why I'm here tonight addressing you guys. I live just east of Flagstaff Road and I can state unequivocally that my neighbors have an extremely high degree of concern about wildfire initiating in this area. I've read and provided feedback to both the city and county CWPPs. The city Boulder plan designates the area around Flagstaff as quote, "an area of concern." I think it's area of concern number thirteen. Brief history, select history. July twenty twenty, Panorama Point Fire burned a half acre. November twenty twenty one, city changes an ordinance on parking to ban it after nine PM. This was necessary to facilitate law enforcement activity after dark. July twenty twenty two, there was a murder at the Realization Point Trailhead general area. So let's fast forward to current, the last two months. June twenty fifth, fire in Gregory Canyon Trailhead, arson, fireworks, arrest. July first, stage one fire alert by the sheriff. July fourth, an extremely impressive fireworks display emanating from Panorama Point. All night long, pretty much. In the past, at past years, access to Flagstaff Road has been controlled, limited in the holiday areas. It wasn't this year. That's my understanding. I'd like to know why not and what we're gonna do in the future. July thirty first, yet another Panorama Point Fire about five hundred yards from where I live. Sheriff Johnson characterized the current incidents as representing a blatant disregard for the life safety of the residents of Boulder County. How do you define success of what you're doing, whether or not it's working? Pull the incident data, data, analyze it, in context, share it publicly, or I can do a cora request. Talk to the field personnel, go to Panorama Point, see the trash, the drugs, the alcohol, the fireworks residue that I see and I pick up. You need to analyze the crime data, not just the fire data, because wildfires are human-caused. And much of that causation is illegal rather than accidental. So let's recap. We're on the Wooey. It's an area of concern in the CWPP. Got a history of illegal activity, history of fires, including arson. We're under stage two fire alert. That to me indicates the current plan's not working. Recommendations, physical barriers of the official parking areas after nine PM. Remove the informal shoulder parking areas. Graduated, escalated, uh, prohibitions about parking for stage one, stage two, and red flag warning alerts. That's among the minimum you guys ought to consider, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Giles. If you, if you feel moved, perhaps you can email those to us?
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are gonna talk a, a lot about wildfires later on in our agenda this evening.
Next, we have Andrew Feeny. And I do see Andrew online, so Andrew, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. My name's Andrew Feeny, and I would like to speak to you all about the Marshall Mesa Trailhead closure. I was involved in a meeting a little bit ago to discuss that. My interest in that is I teach at Fairview High School, and I'm the coach of the Fairview High School mountain bike team. And I am very concerned about a lack of a real safe plan for the entire community to access the South Boulder Trails and, you know, especially my high school students. And so there are a few things that I wanted to mention related to that. The first thing is, I'm really concerned that we're not going to have a solution before the trail closes. That's number one. I know it's slated to close this fall. The concern, or the recommended kind of deal in our meeting was to have people cross Highway 170 at Cherryvale and then ride east to the old Marshall Mesa Trailhead. And the concern for me is that is a 50 mile-per-hour roadway with a pretty narrow shoulder and a guardrail for an extent. And so I definitely don't think that's safe for kids, but it's also not safe for the rest of the community as well, as far as access goes. We are hoping that we keep in mind Magnus White. Many of us were at the Ride for Magnus on Sunday, and we're just hoping that we can come up with a better plan to get the entire community access to the trails. I know the city is pushing Vision Zero pretty significantly and trying to get non-car travel to trailheads. My Fairview team rides from school to the trails after school. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have over 100 kids on our team going to all the trails. And so what we're hoping is that Open Space would consider using some of the trails in the West TSA to allow like an emergency or trial access as a safe route from South Boulder to get to trails without having to cross a busy highway and ride along a busy highway. And so in our meeting, there was a proposed route using the Greenbrier Connector and perhaps the South Boulder Creek West Trail to have some sort of temporary alignment. And so what I'm asking is really that you all consider some temporary or emergency access through that West TSA until the Marshall Mesa Trailhead construction is complete.
Thank you, Andrew. Your time is up, but I think you finished your statement anyway. I think that this is one particular... We're going to let you go now, but this is one item that I want to talk about later on in the evening under Matters from the Board. Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
We don't have anyone else signed up in person. If you'd like to speak online, please raise your hand. And we don't have any other hands.
Okay. That being the case, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Okay, moving on to Matters from the Board. So first, we're going to go through our consent agenda. As I mentioned earlier, this is something that came up during our... This is something that we're debuting tonight. During our retreat last fall, we asked staff whether there was a way to pass items that were relatively or were non-controversial and more kind of procedural in nature. And we know that City Council uses Consent Agenda to do just that. And so we are trying that out tonight for the first time. There is a memo in the packet that talks about the item in our consent agenda. And the way it would work is if you do want to talk about it, any one member of the Board can call it up for discussion. But if it is not called up, and I'll look around. If no one wants to call it up, then I would entertain a motion to pass that specific item. So looking around, I don't see any hands to call it up. Leah, could you project that proposed motion? Okay. So I'd like to see if somebody would like to make this motion. And, you know, because this is our first time, we are spelling it out. You know, perhaps in the future, we could change it to be more simple. But this is what I asked Leah to kind of project for us, if somebody would like to move this. Okay, go ahead, Harmon.
Right. So I move that the Open Space Board of Trustees recommend City Council's approval of the proposed amendment to Appendix 8C in Section 8, 3, 7, Regulation of Horses and Livestock Boulder Revised Code 1981, Updating the OSMP Horse Regulations Boundary Map and Setting Forth Related Details.
I'll second. And so I will... Is there any discussion? No, we don't want discussion. Never mind. That's the whole point. Yeah, so let me do a roll call. Sarah? Approve. And Harmon?
Yes.
And Brady?
Yes.
And I also approve. Okay, passes unanimously. Yay. Hopefully, we'll get to use that again. Right, Brady? You like that, right? Okay. So we have two other items under Matters from the Board. It's kind of actually three. So the next section, I'll open up questions on written information items, but also any other items that we might... Any trustee might want to discuss. And I alluded to that earlier, wanting to kind of follow up on the Marshall Mesa Trailhead closure and our various options there. So I think that we have two written items. One is on paragliding and another on alcohol consumption on the ag properties rule. That, by the way, will likely show up in our October meeting and perhaps under Consent Agenda. We'll get to use that again. So let me... And then I think also, if you're all right with this, under this section, if I'd like to, like toward the end, talk about my concerns about the Marshall Mesa Trailhead closure. The other item that we want to talk about is the OSBT Retreat Preparation Subcommittee. So let's first start with written items. So I think we have... Yeah, first one up is the Rocky Mountain Hang Gliding/Paragliding Association Partnership.
Yeah. I just had a few comments on this. Thanks for the memo in the packet. It's towards the end, and this is something that came up a little bit in the retreat when we were talking about all the different planning processes that we have and how... And what's the cadence of the trail study areas? Is it 20 years, 15 years, Dan? What's the... When is the West TSA, for example, going to come back up? Is the North TSA going to come back up?
Yeah, I don't think... I don't have a plan here, but unless the plan specifically states a sunset period or a recommended renewal period...
It isn't set.
Each plan is set for... Some plans lay out a cadence for review. Others have a period in which it's sort of like the land... Our land management policies in 1995 had a 20-year horizon. And so therefore, it sunsets at a certain time, so...
But we're most likely talking about decades, given the amount of energy that these things go into.
Yeah, but precluding any plan through adaptive management or other reasons, we could certainly revisit portions of a plan, of one specific item of a plan, the whole plan.
Exactly my point. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. And so that's one thing we talked about, was like, okay, well, under what circumstances might we revisit specific items? And the final paragraph here talks about how there's not currently an upcoming planning process to place, review, and approve, you know, any recommendations. And it says, "Staff will explore what opportunities exist for projects and processes to formally review a potential launch/landing zone within the vicinity." And that's the vicinity of the Hogback Trail Area location. So this is just that the paraglider is wanting another launch site to... And so I guess my question is, and maybe we don't have an answer right now, is can we be more... Can we define that a little bit more? Like, is there a time we could get back to them about, you know?
Yeah, basically, that I'm going to bring Jeff up in just a second. But, and you can start making your way up. Basically, what that means is this fall, over the next two or three months, we begin in earnest developing the details of our 2025 work plan. Who's doing what? What capacity do we have? And through that, this upcoming period of the next couple of months, we're committing to identify how we could incorporate it into our 2025 work plan. But Jeff, if you want to add?
Yeah, I mean, Jeff Haley, Deputy Director, Visitor Experience and Infrastructure. I don't really have too much to add, but when we did meet with the association, the group, we described all that to them and said, you know, the location there on the Hogback, we would need... We haven't explored any feasibility of that. It was mainly just a site visit to have a very preliminary conversation. And we explained that we would have to kind of look at that in isolation outside of a planning process, just because there's not one scheduled. And as we develop our plans, we would try to figure out, you know, is there a process similar to like we've been doing other climbing access trails, et cetera? We have a multidisciplinary team. Look at all the characteristics of the site, et cetera. So... But yeah, this fall, moving into next year, if we had capability and capacity for that.
Okay. Well, thanks for that. And then somewhat related is... And two letters came in to the entire board and some staff about people getting ticketed for landing illegally. I just want to provide a little context. So one member of the paragliding community reached out to me and expressed concern that... And this was their perception. I'm not saying this is their perception. The perception was that there was increased enforcement of people landing outside of designated zones or in, you know, no-landing zones for emergency purposes. And so there were a few people got tickets. And I said, "Well, that's anecdotal. If this happened, have people write..." You know, I'd love to hear what happened. Write it up and email me. And they did. And then I responded and said, "If you'd like to send this to the whole board, here's the email address." So that's how those letters came to us. And I did email a few people today. I just think it's... I've seen that this... There's a slippery slope that we should be aware of, I think, of the dynamic between a user community and enforcement and escalating tensions and the adverse impact that can have culturally on relationships with user communities and the administrating body, in this case, the city, but then also safety. And so I suspect that the majority of people on... I'm a retired paraglider. I had a short, dramatic, and ultimately doomed six-month career as a paraglider. I may pick it up again, but it resulted in me crashing with a broken pelvis. So that's another story for another day.
Stick with rock climbing and safer.
Yeah, thanks. But I learned a lot in that process. And when you launch a paraglider, you are trying to harness thermals and things that are completely invisible. There's no like magic goggles that you can put on to show where the thermals are. And so apparently, city staff have told people, "Well, if you're not high enough to avoid landing, then don't try to cross." And that kind of attitude just fundamentally indicates that the person doesn't understand the nature of paragliding. Obviously, an experienced paraglider shouldn't try to cross something that they know for sure they're not going to cross. But if you think you got an 80 or 95% chance of catching a thermal and continuing on your way, maybe all the way to Wyoming. People fly to Wyoming from Wonderland Lake here. There's always going to be a percentage chance that you blow it. It's called bombing out. And so you're trying to catch a thermal. You're trying to catch the thermal. You're looking for it. You're looking for where the birds are. And then, and then there comes a point where you're like, "Ah, this isn't going to work." And that's called bombing out usually. And then you have to land. And if in your mind, you're looking down, you're like, "Oh, I think that's a ranger over there. I don't want to get a ticket. I don't want to have to also go to court," which is what I was... I mean, a small ticket is one thing. Having to go to court, I mean, that's disruptive to somebody's life. And then you pivot, and maybe you land next to a power line. Who knows? There is a very sad story in Yosemite National Park where a base jumper died because they jumped in the Merced River trying to avoid the rangers. Now, that is a dystopian future I don't think we're looking at right now. But that is the kind of thing that can happen when these sorts of kind of cat-and-mouse games escalate. And so I just ask generally, and I don't know the regulations. I don't know what we are kind of committed to, but I just don't believe that exacerbating this dynamic is serving the interests of the public or the city.
Yeah. Really good points, Brady. I think it'd be nice to inform the full board as a part... About the regulation and the emergency provisions. I'd also like... And I'm going to bring Lisa on to maybe explain that part. But before that, I would also like to say that with rangers, there's discretion, right? And that based on what we've heard and like... And we always have continual turnover within our ranger staff. We get new rangers come on, new hires. And that I had an opportunity to talk to our ranger supervisor, Burton Stoner, who's here tonight, about committing to a refresher training on how to differentiate between an emergency, non-emergency, and get some new rangers up to speed on that. So that's one thing that we will commit to. But let's have Lisa come on and maybe explain a little bit about the nuance within that regulation and where the enforcement comes in.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say, Lisa Gonzalez, Recreation Program Manager, I'm the point of contact, primary for Rocky Mountain Hang Gliding and Paragliding Association since 2019. I want to say that our relationship with RMHPA has never been more positive. I have yet to take up their offer to get up in the saddle and fly around with them, which is to my error. But we have been working very closely with them. We value them as, you know, very good recreation steward models. Every year, they come out and they're ready to work and improve the trails, especially in Wonderland Lake where their launch and land sites currently are. So I want to start by just saying how much we value their relationship and their enthusiasm for their sport. It's electric. I think one of the things I want to clarify is that within the Boulder Revised Code is an ordinance titled "Choice of Evils." And that does allow for an emergency landing to occur so that you don't have the loss of life, significant injury. I'd be happy to send that language to you. When we don't want to get to the point where someone has to consider, you know, significant injury or death because of a ranger, it's going to track them down. Now that said, as Dan mentioned, we don't... Rangers do not operate under "let's go get them." That's not the mentality. In fact, we, like I said, we have a very positive relationship. One thing I did want to mention that we are seeing and that we've been tracking over time is the increase in membership of the pilots at RMHPA. So in 2004, for example, there were 42 active members. As of 2023, 373 members. And that can also contribute to the number of pilots that are looking for a safe place to land, but then also could help inform a need for another launch/land site. And that's where we've been listening to our partners in RMHPA for their desires.
Yeah. Go ahead, Harmon.
Yeah, so I just want to weigh in mostly to just lend my support to Brady. You know, I read those letters, and I was moved by them as well. And I'm not going to repeat what you said, Brady, but I agreed with what you said. And I think it's a difficult situation because, you know, we really want to educate the paragliding community so that they don't decide to, you know, save a ticket in a court date at the expense of their life or their limb. At the same time, we don't want to just give them, you know, this sort of get-out-of-jail-free card where they just run up to the ranger and yell "emergency" or "choice of evil," and then, you know, they're free to go. So there really has to be some discretion. I think I'm comfortable with the rangers having discretion with the caveat that, you know, this becomes a matter that is part of ranger education and that, you know, they actually have sympathy and understanding for what these paragliders are going through. I think people need to learn a little bit on both sides for it to be a better relationship. And that's where I'll leave it for me.
Thank you. I just... I'm also in agreement with those two statements about ticketing. I wanted to return to the memo itself and the work that you all are doing with this community. I know we brought this up in our retreat, and it was something that we wanted to encourage staff. Well, actually, it was in the broader context of plans, planning for plans, because there's so many plans and they take so long to redo. And to, you know, if we didn't get... I know we were in a different point in our relationship with the association at the time we were doing the North TSA. And now, so they didn't really have an ask at that point in time. And, and now, so, so they didn't really have an ask at that point in time. And they do have an ask today. I want to applaud staff for truly listening to them. And I know that there is a, a request on the table and I would just encourage you to work it, work through it in your work plan and, and we'll be following that closely, I'm sure, just to, to observe how you're all handling that particular request. Go ahead, Brady.
Yeah, I just want to echo, thanks Lisa for joining us and giving the update and, and the work on this. And as a former member of the paragliding community, I profess to have answers here. That there may be an opportunity to establish other landing areas in different parts of the system. And I think it's important to know that that will not result in an epidemic of men and women falling from the sky in nylon and, and obstructing our view of the flatirons. You've got to be pretty good to fly your paraglider to the flatirons, to even get to Chautauqua and land on someone taking wedding photos. You know, like that's, that would be tricky to do. And similarly, getting to Jodhpur is no small feat. And, and the person that wrote in, one of them is, is, is the highest rated paraglider. So these are people who already know what they're doing and their day didn't go according to plan. And, and to what extent can we give them good options without resulting in negative consequences for the general public and for our management goals? But again, thanks for the time and attention. And I think that's enough for tonight. We've got a lot of other things to talk about.
Thank you. If we don't have anything else on the paragliding topic, do we have anything on the alcohol consumption on agricultural properties rule? Okay, go for it, Harmon.
I have something that may or may not be too nitpicky for your, your tastes. But so I'm glad to see that we're proposing to allow farm-to-table dinners with alcohol on open space farm properties. But the language that I saw in the proposal limits those events to events, I'm quoting, that support agriculture activities on open space properties with a current farm crop and grazing lease in good standing. And my fear is that an overzealous reading of that, you know, making sure that each of those little clauses that I sort of hitched and stopped at is met. One of the clauses, activities on open space properties with a current farm crop, I should say, and grazing lease in good standing. You know, do all of our ag properties have both a current farm crop and a grazing lease? Or maybe we have some places where we're just doing ag production and there is no grazing lease? So the, the and there should probably be an and or an or. And also, let's say we have, I mean, and I don't have an example of this, but let's say we have a property that is an ag property in the portfolio, but it's made up of multiple parcels. Let's say there's an old farmhouse on one of the parcels and our tenant is living in the farmhouse and wants to hold the dinner on the farmhouse parcel. And the farmhouse parcel has no ag activities going on, on it whatsoever. It's just a two-acre parcel that contains the house, the driveway and, and a garage. Now, if, if we're overzealously reading that definition, we might say, well, you can't have that because there's no ag use on that property. So I'd want to see that the, the term property be more broadly defined to, you know, if you look at the language in other parts of the code, you know, it speaks to contiguous lots or parcels under common ownership or control. She'll be considered as one property for purposes of permitting. So, you know, I just worry about good intentions getting interpreted badly five years down the road, 10 years down the road by somebody who's trying to shut down somebody's farm-to-table dinner. And so I'd like to see the language written more carefully.
Great. Yes, thank you. One clarification on your first point, the farm, great, the farm and grazing lease, that's, that's the name of all of our leases that we call them.
So if there's no grazing, it's so called a?
So of our 2028, in any given year, 25 to 30 leases, the name of the lease is the farm and grazing, whether you're growing vegetables or you're grazing. So it's not, you have to have both those activities happening. That's just the term we use for the lease agreement.
Thanks for explaining.
So, yeah, so if we have a, an active agricultural area and it's not managed by OSMP, then it is under a lease. So that would, the nuance about where on the property of an active agricultural lease area can be held? And would we be micro in that if it maybe it didn't include the house area? That's something that we can look into.
So I, I, I just ripped some language out of the, actually, you know, the part of the code I probably know best in the Land Use Code. So if you want me to just email that.
That'd be great.
I'm, I'm happy to just send you the, the text so you know where it comes from. It comes from the Site Review Standards in 1915.
CC Heather Swanson, who's helping me on, helping lead that project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nine dash two dash 15. It's not.
Okay, thank you for that. I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I ask one more question on that? Based on the question, Sarman, just to give us a little foreshadowing, is this an item that you feel would, we would want to raise it more to a, an action item in a public hearing type of thing? Just to give Michelle and I some understanding of where we might put it on the agenda.
I mean, I love to read code, but I'm not sure my compadres here do. But, you know, I, I don't need to see it. I, I think you guys are going in the right direction. You know, I, I might, I, I'd all, I'd like to hear maybe, maybe right now, if, if you feel like commenting on it. I'd like to hear if you think this is sort of like a pilot. Because I saw, you know, that most of this is on Boulder County property and Boulder County allows 12 of these, 12 of these events per year without limited impact special review. And so you're not going to support limited impact special review for more than 12 of these events per year. And you'd hear about that if somebody applied for it, you'd get a referral from Boulder County. And you're saying you, you wouldn't approve of that. Is this sort of a, a limit that seems like this is about 12 times a year is about as much as we want to have? Or is this, let's see how it works at 12? And, you know, maybe there, there could be some expansion of this in the future.
Yeah, I wouldn't view this as a pilot program because I don't, going through BRC changes and everything, using council time, your time, if, if it's in place, but certainly we will be assessing it over time. And if we start to hit limits or if we start to have any other nuances where we feel like we need to go back and revisit the language, we will. But I don't think that we're thinking about, let's give this a chance for one year and then we'll repeal the BRC or something like that. So I think we're viewing this as something that we've seen Boulder County farm-to-tables on, on theirs. We're, we're just seeing some increased interest, so we're not expecting to hit any thresholds anytime soon.
So one more thing, I guess, you know, the, the likelihood is that these 12 events, if I'm, if I'm a farmer and I want to do 12 dinners, I'm probably going to do all 12 of them between, say, July and September, right? I'm, I'm probably not going to do one per month, right? And so, you know, if I'm doing 12 over the course of 18 weeks, you know, it's looking like every week, two weeks, I'm going to have to apply for another one of these permits. So is there some sense that, you know, we can create a permitting regime for, you know, a, a particular account holder, let's call them, where they can just hit send again so that they don't have to, you know, go through a, a, a long and complicated permitting process? And, you know, I don't know if you'd want a fee for each one, that would make sense. I'm not saying you should make the second one free, but, but some way where they can just kind of hit repeat, copy and paste type thing so that they don't have to consistently every two weeks send you in a brand new application that eats up staff time reviewing it?
Yeah, I, I don't personally know the answer to that. I'll, I'll invite Heather. And because this is done through our commercial use permit, Sam, I don't know if you know of any other types of permits where it, there's an individual permit, but they want to do it multiple times and how we might handle that? And, and whether we do that in this situation, I'm not committing to that, but I just kind of want to get a feel for that type of.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to answer. Sam McQueen, Business Services Senior Manager. Yes, just taking off a different hat. We, so within our city permitting processes, we do have the ability, like our commercial use permits, we can permit for a full year. Like they run January 1st through December 31st each year. If you apply for a certain type of permit, we can permit for multiple events. We are in this process talking about involving the alcohol permitting process, which is not run by us. And so that would be something that we would have to figure out. So I don't have an answer on that right now.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I, I would just recommend that you think about some way in which that could mirror the other commercial permitting process where, you know, unless, unless they're going to, I mean, let's say I have a farm table and it's got 24 seats in it. I'm going to apply for a permit for 24 guests. And if, you know, unless I'm going to go and put in another table and I want 48 for the next meal, you know, I'd like to just kind of hit send on the same application each time. And you've already spent your staff time reviewing that and finding that it meets the requirements. So why go through it over and over again if I'm doing this 12 times a year?
Yeah, so we, I can explain a little bit what we have done in the past. So we, we don't allow alcohol right now, which is what we're coming to talk to you about. But the way that we have permitted some smaller farm-to-table dinners that fit within our existing regulations, we have permitted for, we have been able to permit for multiple events on the same permit. And that's typically like two to three, not, we haven't been permitting for, you know, 10 to 20 or something like that. But yeah, so we, within our current structure have been able to. This is going to change a little bit again because we're adding the alcohol piece, so.
Yeah, and, and another thing, you know, that might be useful is if you, you know, maybe it falls more on the applicant where, you know, you encourage the applicant, hey, if you're going to do this 12 times this summer, tell us what the dates are now. You know, get them on the calendar. It's better for you. You can start advertising to all of the people who could potentially come for dinner and then make, come back to you and say, yeah, but it's outside and we kind of have to do it weather permitting. But, you know, just, I think it's worth thinking about all the options. Yeah.
Thanks, Harmon.
Thank you.
Thanks. The other item from the board, and I'll give, is there anybody else who wants to speak on a different topic? Okay, then I'll, I'll go ahead and go. I mentioned earlier that I wanted to follow up on the comment that Andrew made earlier in the evening regarding the planned Marshall Mesa Trailhead closure. I just want to show some appreciation to staff and particularly Jeff and his team that's kept us in the loop about the DRMS, did I have that right, the right order? Remediation Plan and Trailhead redesign. I'm super excited about the Trailhead redesign. My understanding is that could, the, the two projects back to back could keep that trailhead closed for approximately a year. I do love the fact that you are able to keep the trails open during that time and, and to do so safely. So thank you, staff, for, for doing that. I do have some concerns about the folks who bike from South Boulder and don't drive to get there. So my understanding is now is you can access those trails, but primarily it, it's the same if you are going to drive there. But if you are, I guess what's in question now is if you are not one of those people who drive to the trailhead. And I think that it's a high percentage. I don't know, Jeff, if you've been able to, to fact check it, but it's something like, I've heard 30% of bikers who use Marshall Mesa bike to the trailhead. And we certainly, I, I wouldn't think that we'd want to discourage them from doing that, but we'd also want them to do that safely. And I will, in full disclosure, mention that I do ride there with my kids from, from our home in South Boulder in the Table Mesa neighborhood. And I've never really been fond of, of the way that we have to access it. And I know that, you know, the, just, I want to make a few points here that, you know, multimodal access is something that we value in our community. And, and it helps us meet our climate action goals to help reduce emissions. Brian, I'm looking at you here. Brian Anaker gave us a presentation on December 6th of last year. And, and it was a, a really thorough study about our emissions in the, the city of Boulder, particularly in the open space department. And the reduction of emissions from visitors was viewed as one of the biggest areas of opportunity for us. In fact, and I had to look this, look up what this actually meant, that visitors' emissions were 15,278 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. I had to actually look up all of those digits, so I didn't get that right, which is about four times what the department operations has in its particular emissions. And one of the strategies of that particular consultant study was to, that, that, that they modeled was to reduce travel emissions by 5%. So, you know, we got that, that presentation on December 6th, 2023. I also want to acknowledge that we, we have these really big Vision Zero goals. And, and the area in question has been dangerous. You know, my teen, my, my almost teenagers were part of a group called Boulder Junior Cycles who started at the church and then would ride that, that access road to get to Marshall Mesa. But, you know, I looked at the study today and, you know, according to the Boulder County Vision, Vision Zero Plan Crash Analysis, and my data is a little outdated, but it's from 2009 to 2018. And I think there's a newer study out there. The intersection of State Highway 170 to Marshall Road is among the most dangerous in unincorporated Boulder County and, and mountain towns. And there was 20 injury fatality crashes in that, that period. And, and I know that, you know, Vision Zero is about, you know, we, we don't want one life to be lost. And in light of Magnus White, who was a 17-year-old who was killed almost a year ago while riding his bike in the Ride for Magnus event that happened over the weekend where over 3,000 people honored him. I would like to challenge the city to do better, to protect its citizens and especially its youth. Now, I understand that we have three potential paths to pursue to maintain access to the Marshall Mesa Trailhead. And I, you know, there, there are different options and I, and that, that staff has discussed with particular community members. And I am interested in one that explores improved safety access during the closure. I don't know how my fellow trustees feel about that.
Could you be a little more specific about what exactly would be the proposed solution and why that might even be controversial? Because I presume based on how you're framing it, this might be controversial.
It, it definitely might, definitely might be controversial. I mean, there were a few options discussed. One included what Andrew mentioned earlier, which is crossing 170 twice. And, and that's actually more dangerous, less safe. And there's another, or a couple of options that staff could explore that would keep safety just, you know, status, at status quo, which is possibly building a temporary trail from the, the trailhead itself that would allow you to circumvent the project safely, but still be able to access the trails.
So you could, you could park at the park and ride, maybe? Is that the idea? And then you would have a little leg that you could follow and get through the construction and then?
Well, no. I mean, I guess I, I'm potentially, but I'm, I'm really narrowly focused on those.
I'm just trying to understand what that option was. I understand maybe that isn't what you want. But that was, that was one of the options that you identified.
One of the options that Jeff's team is exploring is creating almost a status quo during the closure in which you could still utilize the park and ride. You still need to get there. But once you're there, that we would create a temporary trail that hugs the construction, the limit of construction zone and allows you to still use the park and ride and access the trails. Out on Marshall Mesa, go under the pass and access Doughty Jaw and all that.
But that doesn't address your issue, which is the people, the 30-ish percent of people who are currently riding there under already not perfectly ideal conditions, but it'll be worse.
It could potentially be worse, right? So the, the option that was discussed was crossing 170 right around Cherryvale and using the Marshall, so if you remember the very old trailhead, which doesn't exist anymore, there's no parking there anymore, but that's called Marshall Valley. You could then bike in through there. It, it's super dangerous. I think, I believe there's a, a discussion with CDOT about building a crosswalk through there. And they did not. And they did not recommend that, given that traffic goes there, goes at 50 miles per hour there. And so that's the more dangerous one. The, and I know that Jeff and his team are exploring the status quo options as well. From a safety standpoint, would be status quo for those who bike in. So I wasn't really thinking about those who park because, but for those who bike in, there are some things that they're exploring there. The potentially more controversial one is using existing trails. And I know that this has been discussed, using trails that already exist and allowing mountain bikes on that. I'm not saying that that staff absolutely needs to consider this as a real solution, but I, or target that particular solution. But, but to understand what a process would look like to consider that as an option.
And so this would become, but connect to community?
Yeah, we'd connect all those residents, such as myself, to be able to bike there safely.
From Shanahan Hill and in?
From Shanahan neighborhood into the South Boulder, South Mesa Trailhead, Trail.
Okay, and that would allow people to not get on a?
Not get on a road at all.
So the high school students that we were talking about would never have to get on a road once? Just just cross?
Cross Greenbrier.
Eldorado Springs Drive or whatever.
Oh, yeah, in Eldorado. But if they're coming from Fairview High School, they would get to the, potentially the Greenbrier connector and then be able to access it without getting on a road. And so I guess my, my, my challenge here is can we actually make safety better? This is an opportunity to say, well, you know, we do value the safety of our youth and our community, especially when they're accessing open space assets, trailheads. And we also have these audacious climate action goals. How could we explore a temporary solution while the Trailhead itself is closed for approximately a year?
So, Michelle, I think that's a great idea. And I definitely think it's worth exploring. I think it's really amazing that 30% of people who use the trails out of Marshall Trailhead or out of Marshall Mesa Trailhead are just getting there on their bikes. And we don't want to lose that momentum. We don't want people to forget that they can do that. And, and I think, you know, this, considering a temporary opening of trails that were, you know, that are non-bike trails might get people pretty exercised, just even thinking about it. But this might be the right time to think about it.
And it might not. Maybe we've, we've moved on a little bit since the West TSA process. Can we, you know, is that possible?
You may say I may not get them exercised.
It may not. And not that it may not be the right time.
Maybe public safety in these, these trails being open for the period of the construction is going to be viewed as, let's just not presume this is going to be harder than it needs to be.
Pollyanna. So I guess so, you know, I would like to give you a chance, Dan, to kind of respond to those ideas and, and what you think might be a process to pursue considering that the trails may close as, or the Trailhead may close as early as end of October. And it may get delayed on its own. I absolutely want that remediation work to get done. But I know that, that, you know, if that does happen, people will immediately be in a bind. But also understanding that there's a public process in which, well, first of all, that we need to explore the different options. And then a public process in which we would need to follow as well.
Yeah, just a few general remarks. One is I think staff is, we've been hearing of the safety concerns of not having that Trailhead area available now. So we've heard that Jeff and the team are investigating, how can we kind of keep a status quo out there to kind of remove the worst-case scenario, I guess, from some is we can no longer go there, we're going to have to bike. And we, and we want to bike, now it's like even more treacherous, right? So we are committed to that. So take that item, put it on its side and say, we're going to work on creating a status quo type of situation. In regards to opening up and thinking about a process for, right now, I think all of us know that guidance from our council-approved plan is those trails that have been referenced tonight and some emails over the, over the past couple of days are not open to bikes. So we're talking about a decision that would be staff recommendation, board recommendation, council. So right there, there's a process. I don't want to be the one sitting up here to guess whether or not, is this an easy process? Do people really care anymore? Because I just, let's just put it, some other examples. Let's say staff came in and said, you know, next month, we want to come to you and say, we've made a decision. We're going to close, you know, 30% of the trails in that area, no dogs. Like, from an adaptive management standpoint, if we're able to just use data and quickly make decisions without a public process, from a land manager's standpoint, that's kind of fun. But I just don't want to be the one guessing to say whether or not we've moved on from 2011 or not when it comes to what particular use our community would want to sort of have desired in a particular area. So I guess the one thing I'm trying to say is I really highly encourage a process. And, and I would like to also say that, right now, it's not on our 2024 work plan. As you might imagine, if you're involved in organizations, you take a work plan, you take items, then you match it to staff. Staff, you've kind of got your tasks, your work plans. Do you need budget? Okay, we're going to attach specific budget items to you. Go do your work. So for us to suddenly say, all right, not only is it a process, but we're going to launch into this next month, some staff are going to be tapped on the shoulder and said, by the way, what you're doing now is not what you're doing. You're going to do something else. And because of the expertise of the community engagement and the planning elements, it's probably staff that are already working on projects like the BERT and other high priority items. So that would come into play too, is what are we going to have to set aside? So my recommendation, if you all, if it's sort of your desire for us to investigate a process of what would you do in order to look at the possible changing of West TSA guidance in some form or fashion, we would like the opportunity to come, think about that and come back to you about what a desired process might look like to do that. It sounds bureaucratic, but in the end, I think the right process is almost half the battle. That if we just launched into something that could turn into chaos, we could be inundating council. And so I just also urge us to be a little bit cautious too, but.
So, Michelle, you know, taking, taking what Dan said at face value and respectfully so, maybe a process for us internally would be bring it up at the upcoming retreat. And last time we had a retreat, we, we sort of created a set of priorities. And then those priorities, we ranked them. And then we used those ranked priorities to sort of pre-write our letter to council about what we think are the, you know, the most important priorities around open space for the upcoming year. So, you know, maybe this is a process that we can use. And if, if the board feels that this is one of the major priorities for, for open space, then, you know, and I'm sure you'll lobby us, if you feel like it's one of the top priorities.
Yeah, I do. And I'm about to do that now. So, so I'd like your idea generally, Harmon. Like, I think if, if we could rewind the clock, could we have put this? And I have to admit some responsibility to also not thinking this through when we got the multiple touchpoints from staff about, oh, wow, there are actually all these people who bike there. And I wasn't, I wasn't thinking about them. And the, what instigated this was a public meet, not a public, but a, a community meeting on August 7 that I did not attend and was told about. And I, yeah, I think I should have been paying closer attention and would have definitely tried to, to include that into the priorities. So that didn't happen. We did not have the foresight to really be thinking about it in that way. Our retreat is not until October. And this Trailhead is going to close probably at the end of October. So I think it's a time-sensitive issue. My understanding is that there is precedent for, for having an expedited process. And so I would like to pursue that i- if, if you all agree. I just, I think that end of October just may be too late to have a real impact. But, but I appreciate that. Go ahead, Sarah.
I'd like to just have a clarifying question. What is the status quo plan that is currently in place?
That you would be able to bike or ride with your bike on your car, park at the park and ride at the Marshall Mesa Trailhead and still be able to then access trails right there. You wouldn't have to drive, ride your bike along 170 or any other location to hit another access other than our Marshall Mesa access. So we would actually create a temporary trail around the construction zone so you can currently utilize that site like you've always been used to utilizing it.
So the, there would be an addition of public transit for people? You would be required to use public transit to do a park and ride and then get to the site? Or no, it's all just, so you can still ride directly and around the construction?
You can ride directly to the site. You could drive your car, park in the park and ride site.
Okay, you can do both. Okay, okay. And what, and what about that did you not, do you not feel would be adequate?
So the, the status quo is actually worse, I guess, if you're in a car. Because if you're in a car, you can actually park in the Trailhead and never have to cross 170. Remember that those people are going 50 miles an hour. And it is a very dangerous intersection. So for, for people who take their cars there, yeah, it would be, it would actually be worse. Those who bike there, the, the idea is that they could create a, and I'd have to like, I mean, we could go down this very detailed way of like how you go, you access it now, how we access it now by bike, which does involve using, crossing 170, but you use the crosswalk to do that. So, and that's the intersection that I mentioned has, that's super dangerous. So right now, people are using that crosswalk between Marshall Road and 93. But it is a very dangerous intersection. So what would be status quo is building a temporary trail that you still do that. You still do that, but then you have a temporary trail that, that gets you around all of the construction so you can continue to use it. So that's the status quo one. My, my question here is actually, can we do better? Can we do better for our residents in terms of their safety? And can we do better in maintaining our Vision Zero goals and our climate action goals? Go ahead, Brady.
I just want to note that I use the park and ride usually to get into, to kind of ride share to get into Eldorado State Park. And it's often full. And I'm just looking at the Google image. And both the Marshall Mesa Trailhead parking lot and the park and ride are completely full when the satellite happened to snap a photo of all that. And so it's going to get worse, you know, with taking that Trailhead parking out. There are going to be people who have no place to park. And so that may even encourage more people to try to ride their bikes than might have otherwise.
Thereby endangering more lives. So I, I think what I would like to do is to propose, to propose that we work with you and the department over this next month to work through a process that would explore the various options. So if, if there is some support for developing a subcommittee, I would, if there is support, I would like to volunteer to be one of the people who would serve on that subcommittee. And I know that I also heard from, from John, who's not here tonight, that he would be interested in that as well. But would like to entertain any thoughts about that idea?
Yeah, if you and John, I would support you forming a subcommittee. And, and I, you know, I hear what Dan is saying about the guidance in the West TSA. And I hear what you're saying about there potentially being some more expedited processes to make a small change like this. Let's hope it's a small change like this or temporary. And, and so, you know, like I said, now might be a good time to explore that. I'd support that.
If I could get clarity, is this board asking to cooperate with staff to come back with safety resolving options? Or a process for how we would go about identifying and then vetting and then approving safety-related process, options? Because if we've got 20 days until the next memo is due to actually come up with in isolation from the community, here's the options we think would solve this. That is, that's the process. However, if we're thinking about, give us some, a few weeks to get together and talk about, what would that process look like to identify the options, to get community input on the options, to run it through the approval process? I'm more comfortable with the identification of the process we're going to use rather than the identification of the options and solutions we're going to come back to you with next month. Because I just don't see us having any time to vet it internally. Is the infrastructure set? What's our, you know, is our trails ready for this? What's the count at the South Boulder Creek Trailhead like? Where's the access going to come from? Is that going to, is that spate local parking issues up on Shanahan Ridge? What's the community think? I mean, there's, to me, there's no time for that type of vetting.
I, I understand what you're saying. And from my perspective, it is the latter, that we would explore the process in which we could explore the different options rather than, and come back with those on the September 11th, for the September 11th meeting, rather than presupposing what the solution may be. I, I do want to make sure that this is a collaborative process. I would just like us to explore it together as a community.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thanks. So we're, I don't think we need a vote, but we're in agreement that we will work with, that John and I will work with you and staff over the next month. Sarah, did you want to unmute?
I don't know that, I don't know that I can formally say that I support. I hear, I think I'm hearing a request from Dan to focus now on the process. And I think I'm hearing a request from you to focus on a solution. Am I hearing this right? You're, I'm, I'm just a little bit, I don't understand enough, I'm not a bike rider. I don't, I don't ride my bike there, so I don't have the personal experience. So I don't, I personally don't feel that I can actually weigh in very much here, basically. And I'm happy to just sit back and let this all happen however you, you all see fit. I don't think I could help be very helpful.
Okay. So you don't want to volunteer to be on that subcommittee?
No, I don't think you want me on the subcommittee.
No.
There are a lot of things I can help with, but this is probably not one. I, I'm just actually unclear of what the safety issue is. As a bystander, not with, not trying to insert myself. I, I just still, as a bystander, have questions about what is the safety issue if for one year that we are, it's crossing the road twice? That the, that the new plan forces us to cross the road twice? Excuse me for being like dense on this. I just don't totally get it.
Yeah, I, I mean, there is a safety issue that, and there are a lot of variables at play because that we are closing the, the Trailhead for a year. I am more focused on the process. I am not saying, I'm saying there are various options. Could we explore an option, as one of the different options? And I definitely, I mean, we can explore the less safe option as well. And, but then, and we can also explore the status quo option. We can also explore the, the safer option. But I am supportive of a process that allows staff to evaluate what that is.
Okay.
And to work with staff with that.
I support the two of you pouring over a map at some point.
Yeah, yeah. That's, I need, I need to look at the map.
We've got all the information in front of us.
Yeah.
And I also support us not running roughshod over Dan's wisdom. Because I do think this is a case where, again, what, my first moment of political awareness in Boulder was the West TSA. I was just like, oh my God, this place is like crazy. It was really, it was really ugly. And we don't want to do anything like that again. And we should learn from that. And I agree with what you said, that the, you know, getting the process right is maybe more than half the battle. That being said, I think doing so at an accelerated rate with, again, you're taking all the other things. I mean, that's why, that's why your job is a hard job. You're dealing with a lot of different community priorities. But. But I do think this is worth a good look. And I do think it's worth doing so in an expedited manner. And I think, you know, if you got a mountain biking coach who's moving 100 kids in and out of there twice a week, that's pretty compelling to me in, in the context of Magnus. And so, anyway, good luck. And I look forward to hearing back next month.
Thank you. Yeah, and by the way, that's two teams. That's just the Fairview team. So double that for, for Boulder High, who are also doing that as well. Okay, so I will go ahead and conclude this part and then move on to appointing an OSBT Retreat Preparation Subcommittee. What this entails, I, I served on this committee last year and the year before. But last year was with Brady. And the year before was, I, I served with Dan, sorry, Dave. And what it entails is working with Dan to establish an agenda for that day that we spend together. And it's not super time consuming, but it's also really important because we will establish some of our priorities and, and hopefully get in, in alignment with staff. And so the, the pattern in the past or the tradition has been that one person who served last year could provide the consistency and the, and another new person could also help be part of that committee. So I, I think that I have my hands full. And so that, that means, and I talked to Brady in advance. But, but, but I think Brady, if you want to say for the public record that you're in support of being the, the continuity here.
Yeah, I'd be happy to be part of the planning committee for that. I also just want to say that, you know, this is my first time having been, attended the retreat and then going through, you know, the better part of a year. And I see evidence of our work in almost every meeting. So this is a consequential moment of setting priorities. And, and, you know, the board and staff have done a really good job of, of using that guidance. And I can see it in our agendas. So it, it matters and I'd be happy to help again this year.
Thank you. Other volunteers?
So if Brady's going to be the continuity, I could be the new blood this year.
Okay, all right, great. You'll get another shot at it. Cool, all right, so we have our subcommittee. Thank you. We have two subcommittees today. Thank you. I'm going to move on to item six and pass it back to you.
Great, we have one public hearing item. And that is our long and winding road of, of recommending a 2025 budget. And as you know, this is our final touch with you all. And this is more geared toward you and providing your recommendation to city council. And to bring us home on this journey is Cole Moffett, our senior accountant, and Sam McQueen, senior manager of business services. And I believe, Cole, you're going to get us started with a brief presentation.
Good evening. As Dan mentioned, Cole Moffett, senior accountant. Along here with Sam McQueen, business services senior manager. We're here to talk to you about the final recommendation for the 2025 CIP and operating budgets. So if you can believe it, it's August and this is the final touch of the 2025 budget. So from here on, it'll move to planning board in city council in September and October. But tonight, we're going to go with a quick overview, let you know where we are in the budget development process, along with some details of the recommended CIP and operating budget, as well as clarifying questions and comments at the end. And at the end, we will ask for opinions and recommendations on the 2025 budget materials. So we've covered all aspects at this point of the OSMP budget, which includes operating, CIP, revenues and reserves. And you can find reference in the fund financial, which is attachment A in the memo. So starting off with where we are in the budget process, the executive budget team has approved several of our operating budget requests late last week. This includes two fixed term grant positions for the Mount Sanitas project, the elimination of a vacant VSLP senior manager position, and OSMP's proposal to implement a phased approach to incorporating our latest cost allocation plan. And so EBT is still reviewing CIP projects, adjustments to our standard positions and title review. And we should have answers to those next meeting or in between as well. So EBT also approved about 421,000 for the Community Wildfire Protection Plan for implementation next year. And we do partner with other departments like the Climate Tax Fund and do not receive direct funding, but we do charge those departments. So you will not see them in our fund financial. And then, like I mentioned, from here, it will go, the budget materials will go to planning board for review on September 3rd. And then the city council review begins on September 12th. And so here's just a quick reminder of our fund structure before Sam takes it over and dives into the specifics. But the entire CIP and operating is within the open space fund. Previously, we used to have lottery dollars in years, but that is no longer the case. And OSMP partners, like I said, with the climate tax funded projects, which we do charge. And so with the open spaced fund expenditures, it's obviously CIP. And on the operating side, we have cost allocation transfers and debt service.
Thanks, Cole. Thank you. So turning now to the overall operating budget, OSMP is proposing $35.1 million in operating uses of funds. This chart shows how operating dollars are spent on core services in the department. OSMP generally spends a comparable amount on programs and projects within the community connections, resource stewardship, and visitor experience and infrastructure programs. That changed after the current 2024 budget was approved, excuse me. More of the operating budget will be spent on resource stewardship and visitor experience and infrastructure, which can be attributed to operationalizing ongoing work that had typically been funded in the CIP in previous years. And much of the administration and central services program budgets are used to support and supplement work in other programs. So those amounts are generally lower. To dig into this further, the department uses a fund financial to detail revenues, expenditures and reserves across years for the open space fund. A similar document is maintained by the finance department for the climate tax. This is a table of expenditures from the fund financial. You can see that the fund financial shows 2023 actual expenses, the 2024 adopted budget, the 2024 revised budget, which includes ATB adjustments to date for things like grant awards and CIP carryover from previous years, and the 2025 recommended budget we're discussing today. Across the CIP and operating budget categories, OSMP's 2025 recommended expenditures total $41.9 million. The final piece of the fund financial is reserves. The department has maintained 20% of the operating budget as contingency reserves for unanticipated and urgent needs since response to the 2013 flood. With slowed revenue growth and increasing costs expected over the next several years, and to align with the about 18% reserve strategy for other funds across the city, OSMP has reduced the contingency reserve to 18%. This still allows the department to maintain a high level of funding to access during emergencies while making funds available for important services in the operating budget. OSMP also maintains an acquisition reserve for high priority acquisitions, which are reviewed with OSBT before making investments. And at the bottom, we receive guidelines from the finance department for other reserve categories, which includes sick vacation bonus reserves. Finally, we'll close with a look at the total 2025 operating and CIP budget together. The operating budget, which includes program budgets, cost allocation and debt payments, makes up 84% of the $41.9 million budget. The CIP makes up the remaining 16% of the budget. And I'm going to turn it over to Jeff from here briefly to talk about some upcoming spending in the department.
Yeah, thanks, Sam. We, as you, the trustees, remember, we've been talking a lot about bike racks throughout the budget process. And we were talking about bikes in general this evening. So why not talk about the racks as well? So we did want to just provide a little more context. At the last meeting, we didn't really provide a lot of follow-up from our previous discussions. So just this evening, as we're kind of wrapping up the budget process, we just wanted to remind the trustees about what we're planning and what the funding is provided for. So again, the bike racks in general, a lot of what we just discussed in the last topic about Marshall Mesa access, it really meets a lot of our strategic goals for climate, for allowing visitors to access the system outside of a vehicle, and as well as health and wellness, equity, all those things. And so the bike racks are certainly a goal for our visitor infrastructure to allow that type of access. As I remind, as I mentioned earlier in the budget process, we have been collecting a variety of data this season related to utilization, capacity, how well the racks are being used, specific locations and that sort of thing. We don't yet have that data to provide and present, you know, specifically. But we will be using that later this year and into early next year to inform future decision-making. And our design standards, there has been questions about, you know, how many racks do we provide? Where are they? So at each of our trailheads, we try to provide four racks mounted in concrete, basically the U-style racks. I think we discussed that in our previous memo. And then our access points, which were, which are different than trailheads, those are more the informal neighborhood access. We do try to provide two racks. And so that's kind of what, you know, Jeff, you know, where are you going to do this? How are you going to do this? Those are our standards that we're going to try to abide by. We have a variety of old style racks that don't meet those current standards. And that's really where we'd like to focus the funding. As we showed here, as proposed budget in '25 would include about 50,000. That's kind of what we've been talking with the board about. And so, you know, once again, looking at our work plan for next year, as we just described in the last topic, we'd be starting to specify which locations, whether it's adding new racks to places that don't have them, again, by using the data that we have or updating existing racks that are old or outdated, that don't meet standards. Just to give a sense, there's about 29 locations that we've already identified through, you know, looking at the costs, looking at the priority. And in that total, it, it meets about $50,000 worth of work. So I don't have a full list. You can kind of think through the, the areas where neighborhoods kind of meet the open space, you know, in the Chautauqua area, for example, along Sanitas, some of the neighborhoods right up against the mountain backdrop. And then finally, just want to remind the board, we do have several current projects that are planned, both in going into construction this year as well as next year and beyond, that will also be providing racks. And that's outside of this funding stream. We, you know, again, this, the question is, how, how do we do this on a regular basis, Jeff? And typically, the, the staff, you know, when we do these major trailhead renovations, just like we're about to do at Marshall, we'll have a new series of racks and that sort of thing. So just given a full scope of all the bike racks and bike access will be provided. And just wanted to specifically touch on that 50K. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Don't go anywhere.
Uh-oh.
Good try. So thanks for that information, Jeff. I, I have a question. The, the $50,000 carve out from the $1.4 million line in the trailheads CIP budget, is that only for trailheads? Like, so can none of that money go toward access points? That's one question that I have, and I have another too, but.
No, that, that can go for access points. And so we've kind of got, I've been specific right now about trailheads versus access points. But yeah, that funding will kind of support this whole initiative at access points as well.
At access, okay, so not just exclusively at trailheads. And then, I'm wondering, like, how do you, you, you mentioned that you are measuring the season, the bike, the, the utilization. You're gathering data this season about utilization. How do you measure people who are, are locking their bikes to a tree or a traffic post or something like that? Does that get counted? Do you see that? Because I, I go to Cragmore. Cragmore is my favorite access point. And I always see people like, where do I leave my bike? And, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. That'll be part of the, the assessment and the observation is like, one, is there, is, are there racks there? Are they full? Are being used to capacity? Do we see bikes locked to any number of things like you just mentioned? Trees, signpost, fence post, et cetera? So that's, we're looking at that as well. In other words, is there kind of a pent up demand for more capacity for bike parking? So we're looking at that. I can't, I have to check with the team to know exactly what all locations they've been observing. We could get that information. But if you kind of, again, think about some of the high priority, high visitation areas, that's kind of where we've been focusing. But yeah, looking at, you know, as, as you mentioned, people lock their bikes to all kinds of things.
Yeah, as somebody who got their bike stolen two weeks ago, locking, locking up your bike is a, is a topic that's on my mind right now. So I think, you know, I'll save this for the retreat because it's, it's nice to know that you're thinking about this in the context of your broader work with redesigning trailheads. I would love to see your analysis of the data and, and work with staff. And this is just, you know, giving you a preview of one of my requests for the retreat would be to be, you know, to have more visibility. And what does the entire system look like, like, you know, today? You know, you mentioned 29. And then, and like, how would you chop that up in the next, say, five years to tackle all of them? So that'll be, I think, one of the things that I will, I will pursue at our retreat and, and, and ask for in your work plan, your future work plan.
Okay.
But, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else on the slide, the other ways?
I, I just want to say thank you for putting this together. I really actually love seeing these pictures. And I know, I, I just think this is a great example of how responsive this team is, this staff is to, to us. And I feel as a new, as the newest board member on this board, I just really want to acknowledge all the time and energy that you've put into this entire budget process and hearing us. And this is being one example of how responsive you are to us and to the whole community.
Great, thanks so much. It's really, Sam and Cole have done all the work. And then our trailheads team and our human dimensions team collecting it. So I'm just the spokesperson, so. But yeah, thank you so much.
It's really good. There is not a single $50,000 in this budget that is going unnoticed. Right? It, it is all so carefully thought about. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Good, Harmon.
And Jeff, I, I see what you did there, talking about bikes and then saying you were the spokesperson. That was really good.
Yeah, I intended that.
Thank you. Thank you a lot.
Yeah, thanks for noticing.
Okay, thank you. So now we just have some time for clarifying questions before we move on to public comment. I'm going to stop sharing my screen.
I think Brady has a clarifying question.
I have a few. And I, I did review everything from the last meeting. I wasn't here, so at the slight risk of a tiny bit of redundancy, I just want to understand a few things. So the CIP from the 2024 adopted to revised went up by almost $4 million. What was that again?
So the 2024 number that you're seeing in the adopted, that includes carryover money. So money for projects that are going to be multi-year that started in 2023 into 2024. And also anything that was already on a contract, so an encumbrance. So anything that was like on a big construction contract, for instance, rolled into 2024 from 2023. So that's why the number went up.
And by my reading of, of the numbers that you, that are on page, Agenda Item Six, Page Seven in the packet, the, the deficit that we ran in, were currently under the revised, the deficit we're running will be $7.59 million for, for the year.
That's correct. You're, you're speaking to, I believe, and I didn't mean to cut you off. Was there any other people? Okay, thank you. So the, I believe the difference you're speaking about is from the revenues to the expenditures that we're expecting. Is that, that's the $7 million that you're talking about? Okay. So for us, there are a few pieces that we're thinking about on the long-term strategy. The last two years, we had shared, particularly last year, we had shared with the board, we had been building up fund balance to make progress on planned, planned implementations, particularly last year, like I mentioned. And so we had a large fund balance that we wanted to program in, in the 2024 budget. And you, you've seen us do that last year, particularly how we looked to operationalize some CIP projects. That was really a year that we made a, a lot of progress on that. And so we wanted to start to do those programmings in the 2024 budget. We, we know that we are outspending our revenues, our expected revenues across the series of this fund financial. We are still spending within the fund. It is based on the fact that we do still have that large fund balance that we can go into to be able to, to make progress on the priorities that we have while maintaining our operating budget to, to provide core services across the system. while maintaining our operating budget to, to provide core services across the system.
So in other words, our job isn't to hold on to cash. And within, when, when, so the, the other thing I'm noticing is that the 2025 anticipates a $2.19 million deficit, of which $915,000 is effectively made up by the 2% of the reserve that we're releasing. And so that's my reading of it. So number one, is that more or less accurate? And number two, does, does management have any concerns that we're on a deficit trajectory multi-year?
Yeah, so we have been speaking about this with our city. We collaborate as, so last month, we had our budget team here, and Dan can speak to this also, but I'll just share some basic information too. We collaborate really closely with our finance department, central budget team. They came here last month to talk with us. This has been a topic that we've been discussing with them for a long time. And we've been sharing, you know, back and forth, the same details that we just shared, that we had been saving up that fund balance to be able to program in particular things that, priorities that we needed to make progress on in 2024 and beyond. So they, this is, it is a conversation that has been ongoing with city leadership, with finance department, so that we're all on the same page when we submit a, a budget for the city manager's recommended budget.
Yeah, just to add a little bit of texture. So some of this goes back to 2019. We were expecting to lose quite, quite two pretty significant open space tax increments were set to expire. So we did a number of things leading up that in order to start preparing to have a budget without that money.
Building a war chest to kind of soften it.
Yeah. One of those significant ones actually got renewed after budget preparations and everything like that, which then led to, you know, even bigger fund balance coming our way. And what we decided to do, that was the same year that we had the master plan. And so in order for us to use that available cash, we had the strategy of using it over a number of years to hit tier one strategy. So the idea of a built up fund balance is something that had some planning to it, but it's only sustainable for a few years. So ultimately, where you're going with that, that's where our work with finance department is, is get those numbers in line because we're actually, what we're looking at right now is 2034, in which we are set to lose a, a, a tax increment. And what we have, what we know what we did right for the 2019 is we planned that out over a series of four or five years, so we just didn't fall off a cliff. So we're actually now in that 10-year mindset of what, what does it look like to 2034? Where, where we're going to be operating with reduced revenues? And how do we get there over time? So point well taken, observation is correct. We're using fund balance in a way to continue to prioritize high priority work. And we're not within year-to-year revenue and expenditures. And that's something that we're going to work on.
Okay, one last observation. It sounds to me, the way you think about this is there's, there's the official contingency reserve, which is 18%, but then you're also carrying fund balance, which you're using to float future possible revenue shortfall. So there's like kind of the, the official contingency, but then there's a management decision on fund balance, which is in effect, kind of a different kind of contingency for the possibility that a tax won't pass in the future or?
To an extent. I do think fund balance, and others can jump into if, if you have wanted to share anything else on this. But the fund balance, so when we come to you with updates on, on the adjustment to base that happens twice a year, occasionally, there will be a need to use fund balance to move on something that has become an urgent need, whether that is a, a priority that absolutely has to move forward right now, some sort of emergency. We, you'll see that gets categorized across the city as using available fund balance to pay for that. We didn't, we don't do that, we haven't been doing that this year. We don't have plans to do too much of it right now. But yes, it is an, an area that we can pull from. When we think about the emergency contingency reserves, that is truly for things like disasters that we try to dip into that. And that allows us to, to pull during those ATB processes and special ATB processes when there truly is a disaster citywide that we need to start funding, though that's really where we start to pull that money from. But yes, from a, from a practical standpoint, like a technical standpoint, that money all does live together in our fund and, and we can use both.
Okay, one statement, then a question, and we can move on. I appreciate this, this helps me understand. And yeah, I just, you know, whenever I see deficit spending year over year, I don't care what the, into your agency, it makes me a little nervous. But you all are, are thinking long-term. And are we making interest on these fund balances? Do we have, I know we have debt service. Is there a nice income line that I'm missing?
Yes, that, the investments, earnings and bonds, if you're looking at that same table you were talking about, it would be the second row down under sources of funds. That is.
So we got 1.1 million there at this.
So that, yes, and that's just based on the, the current year's fund balance, yes.
Okay.
So it's just a percentage of it based on some recommendations from our finance department.
Brady, I don't know if you wanted to make your comment, but can I make a quick follow-up on, oh, you're done, okay. So, so when I, I was looking at the, the slide where we had the $4.3 million that stayed the same year after year for the acquisition fund, the reason why that stays the same is because the interest that that $4 million is throwing off is going into this other line item.
So are, I'm, I just want to make sure I know which 4.3 million.
So if you go down to the OSMP acquisition reserve, it's exactly 4.329 million dollars for three, for two consecutive years. And so my question was, does the interest that it would throw off between '24 and '25 go up into the second line, investment, earnings and bonds?
It does. So the calculation you're seeing is after reserves at the very top. So that very top row that says beginning fund balance does account for reserves. So yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and why does that drop off to 1 million in 2026? We, because we, we're like, oh, we're going to have an awesome acquisition. We can anticipate and just, it's going to happen then, or is that?
Yeah, if Lauren wants to address that, I can start speaking a little bit to how we've changed that over the, previously, that used to be a CIP line item. And then last year, if, if you recall during the budget process, we came to you to speak about what our conversations with the finance department had been looking like. And they had recommended that we use that as a reserve line. So in the past, our CIP used to include that, that line for acquisition. And now it is, it's included as a reserve, and then I'll turn it over to Lauren from here.
That's, that's exactly right. And for context, we had an acquisition plan in the organization that spanned 2013 to 2019 with recommendations that rolled into the master plan that cover our goals for 2019 to generally 10 years after that. So that was the balance of the CIP at the time that we decided to move into reserves. And the thinking is that that would support one medium-sized acquisition for one time. And that will likely happen over the horizon that it's budgeted in that reserve. So once that money is spent, right now, we're not funding annual additional acquisition money. And so that's just sort of a return to baseline after we would spend down the remainder of that acquisition fund.
Can I add one clarification to something I said earlier? I apologize, I was just rethinking your question, Harmon. And I believe you're asking me if reserves are accounted for in fund balance for the next year. Is that correct? I may have misunderstood the question earlier. I just want to make sure that I, I'm super clear that, that the reserves are not.
I, I thought you answered my question. Because really, I just wanted to know why $4 million held in reserve wouldn't grow unless it was being accounted for in the earnings line, and you said it was.
It, so that is not being accounted for in the earnings line. I apologize if I misspoke on that. I was not, so what you see, if you're looking at the fund, the ending fund balance before reserves is, is the, is what we expect for interest earnings and bonds.
I think the question is, is the, can reserves, can you, can we be earning investment interest on reserve items? And if so, where do we account for that in the fund financial?
I think you were correct in the first.
In the first one, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we, we earn interest on, the way we talk about it is like on invested fund balance. So we're earning interest on the money that we're not actively appropriating to spend. Does that sound right?
Yeah, yes, I apologize, sorry. I, I think I was confused by my, I confused myself, so I apologize. I just wanted to make sure, because that is absolutely right. And then as I was looking, I was, yeah.
And I think we have that all as definition in the budget policy manual, so we can email that out too.
Okay, thanks for that.
It's a very conservative investment strategy. So it's generally like a pretty low, like at or below CPI sort of estimate for how we come up with that investment earnings number.
Okay.
I just wanted to weigh in on the fact that we are spending down our reserves. I mean, we, we all know that we have a quite a large maintenance backlog. And is it $40 million at one time that was, it was quantified?
Well, in 2019, we, we provided an estimate of the amount of deferred maintenance within our trails program area. And there was a calculation around 2018, 29 that it was up to about a $40 million. That number sort of got famously.
I know, I'm sorry. It's in my brain now.
It's fine. And then we gave an update a couple of years ago on how we chipped away at about, I forgot, 12 million of it or something like.
Yeah, because we did a ton of work up in Chautauqua.
And so when we bring you that whole collective data, we will let you know how we're eating into our, erasing our deferred maintenance in the trails program area.
Okay. And anyway, the, my point was actually that it's the proper use of money considering our maintenance backlog, not sitting on 20-something million dollars and, or 20 million dollars. Right, yes. But, you know, we're spending 1.4 on trailhead redesign. So, so, I mean, that's an example of, of taking care of what we have. Go ahead, Harmon.
Yeah, I, I was just kind of sort of embroiled around that a little. Just that the CIP, that 2025 draft CIP list has six, seven million dollars in it. And it seemed like at least half of that was, was that kind of, you know, reducing backlog. So that's good. Good use of money.
I agree. Any other clarifying questions, Sarah? Okay, so I think at this point, I might just ask if we do want to put a motion on the floor. Oh, no, we have a public plug hearing. I caught myself, I caught myself. Yes, we need to have a public hearing. And so let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any people signed up?
There's, there's no one signed up in advance for anyone in person. If you want to sign up on the table, you're welcome to. Anyone online, feel free to raise your hand. I don't think we have anyone on the phone. Yeah, anyone on the computer, feel free to raise your hand if you'd like to speak. I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay, then I will go ahead and close the public hearing and then entertain a motion. Two motions. Well, if you want to do two at the same time, go for it. Would anybody like to put them forward?
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Okay.
If you want me to make both motions, Chair?
Yes.
Okay. Then I move to recommend that Planning Board and City Council approve an appropriation of $6,824,100 in 2025 from the Open Space Fund CIP as outlined in this memorandum and related attachments.
I'll second it.
Do you want me to move to the second motion and we can discuss?
Yeah, go ahead and go ahead and make that one.
Okay, I also move to recommend that City Council approve an appropriation, $35,874,20 in 2025 for the Open Space and Mountain Parks operating budget from the Open Space Fund is outlined in the memorandum and related attachments.
I'll second that movement, motion. Okay, we have two motions on the floor. Do we want to have any additional discussion about them? Brady?
I'd like to, we've said it before, I'd just like to thank everybody for moving the process and timeline up to give us the time to think about this before, and actually look at a profit and loss spreadsheet before it's already been recommended to the city manager. And anyway, just, you all made, and this is again, an example of a, of a significant change that was a result of our strategic planning retreat. So thank you for that, kudos. I still find the process a little opaque, but I'm, I think I'm just coming to grips with our role here at OSPT and how that differs in other governance roles. And it's really good to see that you're thinking 10 years out. And, and I, and yeah, I think you all did a great job with this budget process, and I appreciate it.
Same here. I, I really appreciate how smoothly the process has gone and how much you've listened to us and, and asked for, asked us for questions and concerns earlier on in the process so that tonight could go pretty smoothly. Actually, we're, we're doing this a month later than we normally would have to, to offer that sort of additional space. I also have been on the board long enough to know that we used to do these separately. You know, we used to do the operating budget and the capital budget separately. And now that we do them together, we get total visibility. And I, I really appreciate how we are looking at this holistically as a board. So yeah, thank you very much for getting us to this point, and I am in support of this. Any other discussion, I will go ahead and call a vote.
Yeah, I'd just like to say I appreciate you following through on the promise, staff, to give us multiple touches and walk us through this budget in a bunch of bite-sized ways that we could understand. And I also to think it would be remiss of us not to just point out that the, the adaptive management that's going into this budgeting, whereby you're looking at the, the master plan and what the priorities are, and really trying to focus the spending on, on the tier one strategies and the things that matter the most, is, is a really thoughtful way of, 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 you know, discharging your duty to the public trust, because this is a lot of money. It's $35 million. And, and I feel good about helping you spend that money by voting yes to recommend approval of this budget.
Thank you. So I'll actually do a roll call then, so Harmon. And I guess, do we need to, yeah, tell me, Leah.
Let's separate them just to be super.
Okay. Okay, so let's do a roll call on the first one, Harmon.
Aye.
And then Brady.
Aye.
And I vote yes.
Yes.
Sarah votes yes, it passes unanimously. The first motion passes unanimously. On the second motion, Harmon.
Aye.
Brady?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Yes.
And Sarah votes yes, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll give them a couple of moments, and we are going to move on to wildfire resilient landscapes, community wildfire protection plan implementation update.
Yep, and we got 32 minutes to the nine o'clock hour, so I'll probably have about a 10-minute director update for you. Yeah, we're, this is a continual conversation. This team has been before you many times. I'm one of the city's most important initiatives right now. And so we wanted to continue our cadence of, of coming to you. We had a very important plan that was recently drafted and signed off on. And now is marching orders for high-level plan guidance for wildfire resilience within the city. But we also know there's about 20 plans in total that speak to some sort of recommendations, actions, guidance on wildfire resilience. So now the challenge is, is how to take the CWPP, these other 20-something plans, and create a coherent five-year action plan that's prioritized. And, and what does it mean for OSMP to move into that realm? So we want to talk a little bit about what it means to move into implementation. So with that, Brian and Paul.
Thank you, Dan, and good evening, trustees.
Thank you, Dan, good evening, trustees. Brian Aniker, Open Space and Mountain Parks Science and Climate Resilience Senior Manager. Paul Innocent to my right, also SMP Wildland Fire Senior Program Manager. And Leah's going to advance our slides for us, the next slide. As Dan said, we've got just two stops on the tour tonight. We're going to show you a little bit about what's underneath the hood of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, the three cohesive strategies, the strategies underneath those as well, or three cohesive topics, 38 strategies, and give you a couple of highlights of projects that are ongoing at Open Space that are connected to that CWPP. Then switch into wildfire resilience action planning, which is that five- to six-year plan to implement the CWPP as, as well as other actions that have wildfire resilience connected to them from other city plans. And of course, we'll prompt you for questions at the end and take any questions you have. Okay, next. So here's a picture of the cover page of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. It's a plan for the city of Boulder, specific for us. You may be familiar with concurrent planning efforts that are going on for Boulder County and other entities, but this is for the city specifically. This update, CWPP. This update, CWPP, was published just recently, summer of twenty twenty-four. It's a citywide plan and it took a citywide team to make that happen, working under the leadership of our project manager, Brian Oliver, the Wildland Fire Chief from Boulder Fire. We had staff represented from OSMP, climate initiatives, parks and recreation, utilities, communications, and on and on. The big focus of the CWPP is in this so-called Wildland Urban Interface and Risk Reduction in that space. As I mentioned, we've got three cohesive topics, resilient landscapes, fire-adapted communities, and safe and effective wildfire response. And under those, thirty-eight strategies and on top of that, fifty-two specific fuel treatment projects. So I'm going to give you a few examples to sort of illustrate that hierarchical structure that makes up the backbone of this plan. Okay, next. So here's our three cohesive topics. These aren't new to the CWPP. These are national standards. Resilient landscapes are, landscapes are resilient to fire-related disturbances. Fire-adapted communities reads human populations can withstand fire in terms of loss of life and property. And then safe and effective fire response, which is a little bit more wordy, but it basically says all jurisdictions can make great decisions and do that in a safe, effective way in response to ignitions when they occur. Next. So then underneath those three topics, we fold out the thirty-eight strategies. Each of these has a little code next to them. RL for resilient landscapes, FAC for fire-adapted communities, and safe and effective fire response is FR. And somewhat of a balance between the three, we've got a good thirteen in resilient landscapes, sixteen and nine in the other two. And then in terms of where OSMP is connected into this plan, the next slide will overlay on top of these, go ahead, some little OSMP logos. And not surprisingly, given that we're a land management agency, most of the resilient landscape strategies are coded as, you know, ones that are of relevance to OSMP or ones that we potentially have the most direct responsibility for. But that's not to say we don't have interest and some involvement in the other two as well, coded about four for each of those, where OSMP will be involved as we go. So that's a lot to take in. The words I'm showing you here are what we call handles. They're just two or three words that we can grab to refer to them. Of course, the plan itself has a lot more words that describe what these strategies are all about. Not going to walk you through them all, just give you one from each and tie that to some open space projects. Next. So the first one we're going to pick on is resilient landscapes, five, grass slash shrub fuel management. Okay. There we go, thank you. So the full text for this says to develop prescriptions and implement hazardous fuels reduction projects in strategic locations, targeting grass and grass shrub fuel models at the landscape and community level. And next slide will show you a project that we've already mentioned to you a couple of different times and ways, which is our, go ahead. We're getting a bit of a lag, it sounds like. Our perimeter mowing project. Project manager for this is sitting to my right, Paul Dennison. So he's done a great job this year of standing this project up. We call it the Wildland Urban Face, Urban Interface Perimeter Mowing Pilot. It's a pilot, so we selected four neighborhoods to do this mowing project from north to south. We picked Dakota Ridge, North Brier neighborhood, Wonderland Lake, the Chautauqua Blue Bell Road area, and then the Devil's Thumb Shanahan Ridge. I'm going to use that Blue Bell Road that you see in the photo just to illustrate what this is about. The idea is to take that Blue Bell Road and treat it as a fuel break that's protecting the neighbors. You can see on the far right of that photograph by extending that fuel break up slope using a mowing campaign where the prescription is to use handheld weed whips and ready-to-work crews to mow that vegetation down to around four to six inches, focusing on the grass and making exclusions for things like shrub, which you see in the foreground there, but exclusions as well for any rare plants or low-lying wet areas, riparian or wetland, and other things. The idea here was to do potentially up to two entries, one a summer, June-July entry, and then a second, a late summer, September-October entry. Because this is our first attempt at this, we wanted to make sure we're learning as much as we can. And we established a pretty sophisticated monitoring program, working with our senior ecologist, Ann Lesberg, and our vegetation ecology technician, Abby Glaser. We created a quantitative monitoring program to look at both the efficacy of the mowing, how are the plants doing, are they recovering quickly? Do we need to go in and mow again? And to look at the condition of the plants, both inside the treated area and then in adjacent untreated area, and to do that before we mow and after we mow. Another thing we're monitoring for is any unintended consequences, especially the spread of weeds or the creation of bare grounds. We were just out there today, and this is a direct quote I pulled from a neighbor. This is very common that we go out to check out how this is going, and the neighbors come right out and ask us questions or, as it turns out, give us a lot of pats on the back. And thank you for doing this work. In this case, Jeff DeHodas said, when it comes to fire prevention, it's as good as it gets. So he was really pleased with the mode strip that was right outside his window. Of course, it's not the most aesthetically beautiful thing to be looking at, but given all the recent wildfire activity and what he observed during the Marshall Fire, he was a major supporter of this effort. Another thing we are seeing in the monitoring data and what we saw today was that the regrowth has been really limited because it's been so hot and dry, to the point where we're starting to reprogram our crews for that September-October into other work because we're not expecting we need a second entry, which is good news because we're getting good efficacy, long-lasting efficacy of, of the treatment. That said, it's finally cooled down. We have got a little bit of rain and vegetation in the thatch is, is quite moist. So it's possible we'll have a late-season regrowth, but we'll keep an eye on it as we go. So connecting that back to CWPP, that implements RL-05 as one example of a project connected to one of fourteen strategies and one of the three cohesive topics. Next. So fire-adapted communities, I'm going to pull fire-adapted community, one, public education. And this one reads, develop and implement a wildfire resilience public education program. Okay, next. So this is a bit of bread and butter in terms of what Open Space does and a lot of other city departments are engaged in messaging and communicating. Our education and outreach staff and our rangers' presence on the land every day, making contacts with visitors, bringing up topical themes and wildfire is a major topic that is on everybody's minds lately, so those contacts are being made. Fire safety, they talk a lot about ignitions, as we've heard about tonight, talk about evacuations, do you have an evacuation plan? If we are in fire danger, we do have a closure, enforcing those closures. Or if we're in post-fire recovery, enforcing those closures and discussing when the sites could potentially be reopened. Then more formal wildfire education programs come out of our education and outreach staff to bring people out on the land and give them a guided hike and tour, potentially recently burned areas and discuss wildfire. The photo you're seeing on the bottom right is a themed interpretive table. We bring these to places like the Ranger Cottage, Boulder's Farmer, Farmer Market. So these are just tools we have at our disposal and of course signage. For example, now we have a variable message sign down at Chautauqua, below Flagstaff that gives anybody driving through or walking by an indication about the stage-two fire ban and the associated regulations. Our communications department itself is currently working on a formal campaign for messaging to bring something out in the next couple of months and into the fall to really push out fire safety messaging to the community. And then the, the third thing I wanted to highlight was our Boulder Fire Rescue Department has a team called Community Risk Reduction, and their focus is on connecting with homeowners, handing out that Wildland Fire Preparedness Guide you see on the slide, but really conducting detailed home assessments, which anyone can apply and say Boulder to have one of these completed. And one of the staff members will come to your home and walk your property with you and give you recommendations about defensible space, both in terms of vegetation on your property, but also the materials that your home is constructed on, out of as well. Okay, next. So that connects to FAC-01. And then finally, we'll look at safe and effective fire response. So once we have a fire, these strategies all speak to that response element. We have less of to do here. Obviously, we have our rangers who play a huge role here in supporting Boulder Fire, but Boulder Fire often will be manning the incident management team. That said, there are definitely areas that we're looking to focus on and some enhancements we're, we're putting in place already. And to discuss one of those tied to FR-04, I'm going to turn this over to Paul because this is another one of his projects that he's implementing this year.
Good evening, good to see you again. Paul Dennison, the Wildland Fire Senior Program Manager for Open Space and Mountain Parks. Leah, you can advance to the next slide. You did read the text. Okay, actually, back up, please. So the text of this strategy reads, encourage relevant city of Boulder departments to develop plans and procedures for activating departmental operations centers. And those are some long words, but the concept of a departmental operations center or a doc is for agencies whose primary function is not first response, to have a model to shift the activities or operations of that department towards a disaster. So you can imagine, public health, for example, the county department has a very robust DOC model. They're not first responders, but when there's a, a public health crisis or an epidemic, they adopt this model in order to shift their, their day-to-day focus. Open Space is interesting because we have a very large number of first responders, but we also have other roles and responsibilities in supporting incident management. Next slide, please. So this is an organization chart that displays how we can organize ourselves to meet the needs of a disaster. It was designed with wildfire response and support in mind, that being the most likely to be experienced hazard that threatens or occurs on our system. But this is also a model that can function or could function during other forms of escalating emergencies or disasters, such as complex rescue operations if one to occur, were to occur on the system and others. So it's quite a lot to take in visually. I'll try to do an adequate job of explaining how these different strands connect to supporting the incident itself and supporting open space staff who may find themselves navigating a different set of responsibilities during a disaster. And then to make matters slightly more complicated, there's also the Emergency Operations Center, which leans more towards coordination that needs to take place outside of the incident and managing the consequences of a wildfire or another disaster. So as you can see, our director, Dan Burke, remains the director, just again, with an emphasis on responding to and supporting the incident needs. So Dan, or his designee, provides strategic direction, policy decision-making, represents the department in larger policy groups, which are typically formed in an ad hoc basis. Somebody becomes a coordinator of all of these activities. And the main functions, again, are supplying human resources and other support to the incident directly. So that can come in the form of trained firefighters, our rangers, who are both firefighters and law enforcement officers. And we also have a variety of very skilled specialists who support the Emergency Operations Center. So I hope that gives you a bit of a picture. And to give it more of an illustration, Leah, you can advance to the next slide. The recent wildfires that have occurred have given us the opportunity to test this model in response to actual wildfire incidents. And they also demonstrate the variety of applications to which we can put this model to use. So as you're likely well aware, just a handful of the fires that have been occurring in the county and in surrounding areas, which, as you're also probably well aware, are likely explained by the well-above-average temperatures and critical fuel dryness, very dry vegetation. Started with the Joder Fire, which took place on our land, burned three-quarters of an acre on July eighth. And there wasn't the requirement to really fully activate our departmental operations center. But in my view, and Dan, please feel free to add to this for you, Brian, it showed that just the framework of the type of roles and responsibilities that those of us involved in this model are prepared for are helpful even in a smaller-scale fire like the Joder Fire, that we were able to more readily kind of step into the positions, even though we weren't required to, to really shift the focus of open space for even more than a single day. So just a helpful sort of ambient level of readiness that was a, a good consequence of having this plan in place. The dinosaur fire, which I was absent for, which was causing me a lot of stress until I jumped on Microsoft Teams and saw how well in hand all of my colleagues had that fire and really just seemed to be an exemplary example of safe and effective wildfire response and, and a good illustration of how well the model of the Departmental Operations Center is functioning. Okay, go ahead or talk a little more quickly. The Alexander Mountain Fire was a very large fire, still is. It's ninety-four percent contained, that occurred outside of Loveland. And this was relevant mainly in that it, through this model, we're able to communicate about risk conditions, raise each other's awareness of the impacts of nearby events. We anticipated that it may draw city of Boulder resources and also that resource scarcity was becoming of great concern nationally and in our region. And then the very next day, the Stone Mountain Fire occurred, although it wasn't threatening or taking place on the open space system, we activated the DOC early and that proved to be a good decision. Many of our resources got called into that fire directly. And as you probably know, we experienced several smaller fires, but nonetheless destructive or very threatening fires on the system. So I'd love another chance to explain in more detail the variety of roles, and I'll show you on the next slide that our very talented staff engage in during fire response, but I'll have to skim through it a bit to make sure Dan gets his eight minutes for the director's report. Yep. Next slide, please. Yep. Cut me off anytime. So as I mentioned, we have a unique department and really a wide variety of very skilled staff members who can support wildfires in, in a variety of ways. So we have our law enforcement officers slash Wildland firefighters in the ranger program. We also have, including the rangers, around fifty trained Wildland firefighters. And that staff is also complemented by their specialists who are skilled in making maps, communications during emergencies and, and other specialized skills. But something that was taking place during these fires, and just to show you some of the variety and how we prepare for and respond to fires, we've been supporting severity patrols, as they're called, during elevated risk conditions. We'll send our trained firefighters, usually in conjunction with Boulder Fire and Rescues Wildland Division, to patrol the system to be in a higher state of readiness. As I mentioned, we've been supporting the Emergency Operations Center in a variety of ways. Public communications, although a little more tangential to safe and effective response, includes the variable messaging system that Brian mentioned to get key risk information out, but it can also be used to communicate important public safety information during an incident such as evacuation routes or destinations, et cetera. Some of our other functions at Open Space are in creating or participating in the development of interagency agreements that describe how all of our departments and different governmental entities rely on each other and what the terms of that shared assumption of response obligation consists of, and education and outreach, which Brian touched on very nicely. And there's more to that, as I'm sure you are aware, but I'll leave it there for now. Go ahead, Leah. So also, as Brian mentioned, fuel treatments is likely to be the main area of emphasis for our department. And this just provides an example of what some of those treatments can look like. Hand thinning refers to treatments of mainly trees and other woody vegetation to reduce the intensity of fire or reduce risk in, in other ways. Roadside vegetation management can be any form of vegetation, but again, taking advantage of the existing break in fuel that's offered by a roadway and also having the benefit of reducing the risk to firefighters who are accessing those roads and, and most importantly, the public who may be using the road networks for evacuations. And then some of these treatments are categorized based on the fuel types. So there are certain treatments or recommendations that refer specifically to grass and recommend grazing regimes and prescribe fire mowing as we're all, we are already. as we are already engaging in all of those things, but with a specific emphasis on grass fuel types. Next slide. Almost there. Next slide. So this is going to be a very complex effort, taking the many recommendations in this plan, pulling them together in a funnel with a variety of other plans and other internal and interdepartmental efforts in the past that have identified opportunities or made recommendations to reduce fire risk. So we are now in the process, go ahead and go to the next slide, Leah, of pulling together everything that the Community Wildfire Protection Plan relates to. We're interpreting how all of these plans connect through our City of Boulder Wildfire Resilience Team, which has representation from at least six departments. And sometimes we invite temporary participants from other departments. But we have Boulder Fire, Open Space, needless to say, the Office of Disaster Management, Parks and Rec, and others, all regularly participating in that group. So identifying how these plans relate, what are departmental and interdepartmental gaps and areas of potential opportunity are and what programs we need to create or enhance, what projects we want to prioritize. We're trying to determine timeline, cost, phasing. And as Brian and Dan, I think, mentioned, that we're trying to take immediate action on our highest priorities, but also be thinking in a three- to five-year time horizon so that we are being thoughtful and deliberate in how we phase all of this work. And currently, and we are, we're moving quickly and all of this is happening in real time. The CWPP was just completed, but we're trying to evaluate planning frameworks and how we can enhance staff capacity to tackle this major undertaking. Next slide. Which brings me to question and answer. So I have two questions or prompts for all of you. First, what are your thoughts about current OSMP, unless you all are engaging in mitigation and preventative actions? Current OSMP mitigation and preventative actions, such as the WUWE Perimeter Mowing Program, forest treatments, prescribed grazing, are you hearing any feedback from the community regarding these actions? And number two, do you have any questions about OSMP's responsibility when a fire happens on open space land or regionally? Thanks.
Thank you. I guess I'll just open it up to the board to choose whether you want to follow those prompts or just provide any other comments and questions. Anybody? Go ahead, Brady. Oh, sorry, Sarah.
Thank you. So thank you for that presentation. Having such a vast open space makes the Boulder community really special. And I think it actually presents us with an opportunity when it comes to fire remediation and prevention, because we can have a consorted effort to ensure that a pretty vast amount of land that's bordering and all within and throughout our city is protected through a unified effort. I do feel, as somebody who's looking five years into the future, sitting on this board for the next five years, I feel that this is going to be one of the most important, most substantial conversations that will be taking place. And I feel very excited and also invested as a board member in this conversation. I'm really a bit disappointed, actually, that we only have six minutes. This, to me, is the most important topic today, is this. So, okay. And we can end on time. I think this is a lot, I see here that it's long-term. I did have one person approach me, one citizen, in an informal way. They own a property that is adjacent to Sinidis. It is the property, it's the academy, currently called the Academy. And they were very interested in, they were wanting to know how they could support any efforts by Open Space to help with the fuel. And I'm trying, I'm looking for the proper language here. I'm going to get this down. Again, this is all very important. I will get this down. But hand thinning, fuel treatment projects. And I was noticing, and I told them I wanted to do some digging and to have some time to speak with Dan and to get, that I would get back to him. But I'm seeing here RL02, Work with Private Landowners and Other Partners to Reduce Hazardous Fuel on Private Lands. That seems like an opportunity worth exploring with them and also collaborate between private, local, state, and federal partners to plan and conduct cross-boundary fuel treatments. That specific example is a property owner that it's a business. And it's a very interesting business because it's a collective. So all of the residents there at the academy are invested, literally, in the academy and the property itself. And that's a very, also, interesting population because it is the retirees. And some of them have, they have done some pretty incredible things in this community. So in terms of education and engagement, I think there's a fine opportunity there. And also because it is a business and there are some resources that could be shared, I would just like to flag that there is an interested property owner to, as you, as we begin to explore RL02 and RL03. And then also, I think I have said this at a past meeting, but I would want to just reiterate that there is a feeling of powerlessness that a lot of us, I personally have this, and my son is now 12. So he's taken, to my horror, my son, who's 12, has taken to watching the news avidly, waiting for the next wildfire. And he talks about how it's both terrifying and interesting at the same time. He doesn't watch horror films. What he's watching is the news to see when the next fire is igniting practically in his backyard. So I would love, on the public campaign side, to do a lot, to see a lot of storytelling. If you're out walking and talking to neighbors about what residents can personally do as a media and production professional, I just, I'm always, a camera's usually following me around. So I'm imagining a camera person or a few following you around with a microphone and very simple reels going up on social media to share with the citizens and for the citizens to share with their kids, what can we do? Just that kind of like, we can do it, we've got it. I think, I do think we have a very engaged citizenry. And the one thing, we may not all be paragliders and we may not all be bikers, but I think we can all agree that we not only love the open space, but we love this city and we want to preserve and to participate as much as we can. So those were my initial thoughts. And I think it's a partial response there. But I am excited for us to really make this a priority as a board, to really be thinking critically and checking in regularly and supporting however we can.
Thank you. Did you want to go speak a few words, Harmon?
Sure.
Or wait, was it Brady? I'm sorry.
Brady, go ahead.
Okay.
So, well said. And I just want to note that it's so funny how quickly things change because previous boards would have been perfectly happy to go two hours over the time limit on the agenda. And so we can find a happy medium and occasionally go over a little bit.
Three or four hours.
Yeah, yeah. So we had two comments tonight on this. And in my recollection, as they were, they both related to human causes. And so I'd just love to take a few moments, if you could educate us. Like when there's a human-caused fire, specifically Flagstaff and Karan Dinosaur were mentioned. I mean, are these kids playing with magnifying glasses? Are these people smoking? Are these homeless encampments? Like what? You know, before we seriously consider closing the Mesa Trail and thousands and thousands of people, like let's understand what is the issue, the root cause of human ignition, and then think about that. So could you educate us on what those?
Can I chime in just momentarily because you did mention the Joder Fire? And maybe you could talk about that, how that was started as well.
You're asking a very difficult question at exactly nine o'clock. Yeah, the first question, what is the main cause of human, or what is the main type of human-caused ignitions? And that's a really difficult question to answer. There is a lot of legal and procedural difficulty around even determining cause of fires, even if fire investigators or incident commanders have a fairly good idea of what caused a fire. So that makes it difficult to have a reliable data set in the first place. But there are some obvious causes that we know about and I think some obvious solutions or ways that we can address that. I think Dan or Brian would probably be in a better position to explain some of the many things that we're already pursuing or ongoing actions to prevent ignitions and ways that we plan to enhance those. So Dan, if you feel like interrupting me and talking at all about that, please do.
In terms of human, human causes, we have a number of regulations in place that tries to make some of those ways that you start a fire, for instance, creating a fire on Open Space is an obvious one that could be a cause. Smoking, throwing cigarettes, matches into dry vegetation could be a cause. Illegal campfires could be a cause. Reckless behavior could be caused. And we have a number of Boulder Revised Code statutes and regulations that address those. But even with something on the books, it doesn't necessarily eliminate all bad behavior, if you will. So yeah, if it's not lightning-induced, there's a good chance it probably was human-induced. So Burton, I don't know if, I don't think right now we could pull together and give you some percentages of what might be under each category of a cause. That actually is an Open Space's role. If it's out on our lands, out in the county, that sheriff's office will have a determination of causation.
Are you worried about, like, just kind of giving some guesses? Is there, is there, I mean, what's, is it, are there one or two that are particularly troublesome, given our situation in the city?
I would say the one thing that we go to work on every morning is patrolling for illegal campsites and fires.
And do we, is that all human-detected? I was recently in a forest in Brazil where they had AI cameras. And there was a control station, but the computer figured out any anomaly in the image faster than someone staring at all the screens. And the alert was very quick. And so I guess, you know, one, we can prevent people from starting the thing. And then do we have the highest level of timely detection as well online?
Do you want to talk about early detection?
Yeah.
Early detection from a regional perspective. And then there's stuff that we are doing specifically on patrol for early detection, but.
And to answer your question specifically, we participated in one, I believe it was sort of in a beta phase. But just as you described, AI-powered early detection software, it ended up being fairly unreliable and we've moved on to a second that has more promise. But it's just what you described. There are some issues with training the algorithm to differentiate chili smoke from a smoke column from a wildfire, et cetera. But so the city and Open Space is very involved in that, is trialing different software. It's an emergent field of technology. But then there's quite a bit more to early detection between patrolling the system, working with other partners to elevate the level of community awareness and sort of reporting protocols. You'd be amazed how many people are discouraged from calling 911 because they don't want what they think might be smoke to jam up a dispatcher's time. So there's quite a lot of educational opportunity that fits into early detection. And there's far more to it than that. And although it wasn't as featured in the CWPP as perhaps it could have been, these are all very important focus areas to Open Space and the other departments. And I look forward, I'm glad that we were in communication and I'm very happy you showed up and stayed. And I look forward to working with you and others in the community to work on the problem of ignition prevention, detection, and deterrence.
Okay, Harmon?
Sure. Okay, so I have a comment and a couple of questions. But before I do get into that, just, I could talk about this with the board after the meeting, but I might as well just do it here in the, on the minutes. So this nine o'clock thing, Sarah, this is, this is part of something we worked on in our rules of procedure before you joined the board. So if you want to see them, they're on our webpage at the bottom. You can click on them. And the one we're talking about here is in Article Four Agendas. It's number four, and it says, "The Director and Chair will strive to create agendas that allow meetings to end in a reasonable time. The Board's goal is that meetings adjourn by 9:00 PM. Agenda items that have not yet commenced by 9:00 PM shall not be taken up at that meeting except by majority vote of the board members present." So there's no time limit at nine. It just says that if we don't have, if we haven't finished our agenda, we can't get to the next agenda item if it starts after nine, unless we vote to keep going. So no one has to hurry.
So no director updates.
Yeah, I'm in favor of denying Dan.
Dan, what is it that makes them want to tweak you like that? Okay, so, so just to be clear about that, so everybody knows. Okay, so my first is a comment and then two questions. The comment is that Jeff Haley took Michelle and I on a bike ride before North Sky Trail opened. So we got to check out the trail building work, and it's beautiful. And on the way home, you know, I was like, shoo, you know, let's cross traffic and check out Wonderland at the last second, you know?
That was very scary, by the way.
Let's go look at the, let's go look at the hand-thinning project over there. And what was really cool is I remember Paul talking about that at our retreat where, last year, where Paul said, you know, that none of this stuff matters if the neighbors don't do it. And so we were really, we walked up and down the road for a little bit to sort of see, you know, did the neighbors on their side of the fence line do the thinning that they had to do? And they did. And it just looked great. So congratulations. The two questions are, do the forensics, you know, Brady asked a question about this, you know, how, when we're, when we're looking at sources, human-caused sources of fire, do the forensics get factored into our adaptive management strategies on policing, on how the Rangers behave and what they're looking for when they're out on OSMP land?
Are you talking about when a fire has occurred?
Yeah, when I said forensics, I mean, like, who caused it? When we do that, when the sheriff's office does that, do we, do we take the information that we get and feed that into the loop?
Oh, absolutely. I don't want to speak on Burton's behalf, but I know just from working with the Rangers that that is very much part of their awareness and part of their practices. And they're probably better-trained law enforcement observers of signs that might be crucial or determinative and in arson or other type of fire investigation than most law enforcement officers would be just by virtue of their additional training in natural resources.
And if something happens on Open Space, typically the Rangers are the first folks on the scene. And then we, and then the cavalry arrives and we get a, and then we take a step back from leading the response. But typically, if it's on Open Space, I would say for the most part, it's probably an OSMP Ranger that arrives there right away and first could encounter, which also could lead to what else are they encountering that might have led to that? So yeah, they're a really part, big part of the puzzle.
And then, Brian, I remember when, when you and your team talked with us a few months ago about, about carbon reduction strategies. Is, can you talk to how the wildfire prevention and carbon reduction strategies play together, if at all?
Yeah, it's a little bit complicated, but the fuel mitigation, of course, is carbon removal. So if you cut down a tree and you burn it in a fireplace, that carbon has joined the atmosphere and is part of the problem. But the hope is by doing those removals, you're avoiding high-intensity catastrophic wildfire, which the release from those is much greater than the release that you're doing with your vegetation management. So it is a net benefit. If your fuel reduction either prevents fire altogether or brings fire through in a healthy way or is low-intensity kind of groundhugging and you're not getting high levels of tree mortality or the prevention of tree regrowth after fire. So that's the concept. And then there's some data that supports whether or not that's happening. There is also some early indication that forests in particular are going to become net emitters, despite the fact that they're splunging a lot of carbon. There's a lot of carbon locked in forests now. At scale, we're just not going to be able to prevent the. At scale, we're just not going to be able to prevent the types of fires that we've seen, like the troublesome and Calwood fires, where you're getting landscape-level conversion, where you're losing forests and it's moving over to sort of no analog types of habitats or kind of root or old grassland troublelands. So at the state level and the federal level, forests probably aren't the answer in terms of locking carbon or putting even more carbon into storage. It's potentially going to be a net emitter of carbon. But locally, I think on open space, we're doing everything we can in having the double mandate of managing for ecological health and doing this wildfire risk reduction. I think it just reinforces that, the vegetation management we've been doing for years and some of these new techniques are appropriate and need to get emphasized and protected and maintained over time.
I mean, it's a tough position. It's kind of like being the CIA and trying to take credit for, we didn't have another terrorist attack today. You know, that if, if what you're doing actually causes carbon emissions, how do you justify doing it, you know? Well, because we didn't have a big one.
Yeah.
And, and I mean, we've seen the results, like the Eyeball Survey says this is good, like the Encar fire, which never turned into much because of a variety of reasons, one of them being the thinning project that they all did before, before the thing took off.
Yeah.
So is there, do you have any thoughts on how to sort of properly quantify the savings that we, you know, that we may be actually making by doing these little?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a bit of a cottage industry called avoided emissions.
Avoided emissions.
If you search that, you'll find different ways to produce estimates based on empirical data and formulas. You take your acreage, you take your true densities, you model the fire risk, you, you could, if you wanted to, bring hypothetical fires through that stand, different levels of intensity and say scenario A, B, and C would have lost this amount, that amount, and this amount of carbon. And give yourself credit for that. But that is usually why people go down these roads, is to pay themselves through carbon taxing schemes to get that benefit and say, we've avoided this much loss, therefore we're going to receive a payment of this amount. The city and the state aren't in carbon trading. And California has cap and trade, and so we could look to see what the standards are looking like there. But again, I don't think for open space, we're probably going to enter the game of monetizing our carbon because it's potentially pretty risky to give a guaranteed carbon storage when what 2050 conditions look like if we're continuing on the trajectory we're on now, it's hard to guarantee anything, especially something as difficult to understand as carbon and difficult to measure and monetize. So I think it's, some of the framework is there, but it's not something we're focused on right now.
So not focused on monetizing for sure, but not even thinking about measuring either?
Yeah, we had carbon monitoring. I mean, we did have a big inventory and we presented some of that to you last December. So we have some baseline. And then we had a strategy around regular carbon monitoring. And we put it in the hopper against 100 other things we could be doing for climate action and it didn't reach the top 20. So the top 20, which is the next update we'll give you, are those things we're going to try to implement between now and 2030? And yeah, carbon monitoring and monetization just are not, according to staff, are high priority.
Thanks for that. You know, it's, it's always amazing when I think I've, you know, thought of something, you know, sort of interesting and out of the box, and then it turns out you've been working on it for the last five years.
And we rejected it.
I can't help myself, a really quick comment. I support your decision not to pursue that. And I think it's, well, it's an interesting intellectual exercise. There's a lot of fuzzy math in carbon accounting still. And I think data is often only as useful as it is actionable. And it begs the question, what will we do with such information other than put it in a report and brag about it a little bit? So I support, for what it's worth, your decision-making on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. So I'll maybe wrap up the questions around this particular part of the agenda. When we were, you're talking about the CWPP narrowly, which is what we were talking about this evening, and you're distilling it down to 200 action items?
That's what it called, that, that's what it's identified in that plan and the other plans that exist that have been adopted in the city. There's well over 200 recommendations, actions, treatments that are called for, CWPP plus the other plans. So how do we go about prioritizing? Where do we want to accelerate, enhance? What's the cost? What's the staff needed to do?
So I know we talk a lot about what you all do already. And now that you have the CWPP completed and you're distilling this down, prioritizing them, costing them, when will we see this next? What comes out of that work?
Well, the good news is, is it looks like we're going to get some wildfire, there's $1.5 million of the Climate Fund tax that is supposed to be directed every year or two wildfire resilience. One of the concepts with is, is to use a little bit of that money to bring on a project manager for a 28-month term to lead the citywide coordination of the development of that plan that's going to be prioritized, sequenced, put cost estimate to it, in addition to while we're continuing to do the work. And so one of the reasons we wanted to bring implementation to you today is because we're at the cusp of launching that effort. And so, yeah, we would very much intend to keep you updated as the plan starts to get developed. And so we can report back on what that means for open space and maybe even do some linkages to future budgets and how it relates to the implementation plan that is now being developed. But I also want to let the community know, and you all know that, we're going to be doing that while we're continuing to do a lot of great work already. It's not like we're waiting for another plan before we do something.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you still do, I mean, like you have a number of tools in your toolbox, you know, cattle grazing, you know, thinning, all those different things, strategies that you already implement, you know? And education is, I think, one of the big ones. I know city councilors talked about banning mulch. And that may happen like as early as next year. And because it's, it's highly flammable and people are still putting them in their yards. So, you know, what can people do? People can protect their own property, you know, from contributing to, to additional fire and just, you know, adding more fuel to it. But yeah, I think education is a big piece of that, whether it reaches businesses or residents or, or through assessments, individual assessments. So I think you're doing all of that. And so, yeah, I just want to say that I appreciate, I've had the opportunity to talk about wildfires with you all a lot. And it's been a very difficult summer. And I know that we've all appreciated the rain and the bit of reprieve because we're all, all of our nervous systems are operating at a very high level. And that hasn't been good for anybody.
Yep.
Much less the, the air quality issues. And I had a friend who lost her house the summer too. So, thank you. So I think, barring anything else, do we need to actually cast a vote to what, do Dan talk?
If I could have one minute?
Okay. No, I mean, you can.
The only update I have is based on some actions that were made tonight. I just want to give you a heads up that next month's budget now looks extremely aggressive. And wondering if the retreat subcommittee wants to consider, we have 15 minutes allocated for you all, but we did that not knowing that the retreat's actually going to be at the end of October. So one of the strategies that I want to work with Michelle on is maybe borrow a little bit of that time to move into this new agenda item that you were asking us to work on, which is, what's that process look like? But just to give you an update right now, that we're probably looking at an agenda that's well over nine o'clock based on adding that new agenda item on for looking at a process. And there's also another one agenda item that just popped up that we might not put, we're trying to put it on consent, and that's just granting a license for an underground monitoring at Valmont Butte. We're hoping we can do that through consent, but you'll see that addition to the agenda as well. So just wanted to call out next month.
Dan, is there an opportunity, sometimes we don't, the, the information we get in the packet is really light and then the presentation is pretty heavy. Is there an opportunity on any of those agenda items to have a little more in the packet and then have a very high-level, briefer presentation? I'm not, I'm not suggesting, if we need to go late, we need to go late, it's fine. I'm just wondering if, if, if we all commit to doing a little bit more reading?
Well, look, for instance, the MADS, you get, this is the fourth time you're seeing MADS. I would imagine the presentation on that as well, under 10 minutes. So if you all don't feel like you need 20 minutes for that, that could be an area of savings. The BERT is one that I think is going to be a robust conversation. I don't see us being able to shave too much time off of that. We'll try to keep the presentation as light as we can. But that is a, I think it's going to be of utmost importance to you all, that subject matter, and it has community interest. So, but Michelle and I, I mean, in our group, we'll work on the agenda.
And then regarding BERT, Dan, we talked about scheduling some, some walks.
Yeah, we're going to schedule a block of time when staff will be out on the site and for trustees that are interested in going out to look at a section of, what are we even talking about? We will let you know. And if you're interested, you could let us know. If it turns out that more, more than two of you at that same time want to be there, we'll have to do some rearranging, like, hey, could one of you come an hour later? Or something like that. But we are looking to identify a time to offer where staff will be out there where you can come and take a look.
So I've encouraged my fellow trustees to respond to that time survey as soon as that comes out. I think that's going to be super important for us to set the stage for the September 11th meeting regarding the BERT and to, and to walk it with staff. And many questions may actually be answered during that time. And so yes, that's going to be at least a 60-minute block of our September 11th meeting. But it, you may get additional information before that. So please take the opportunity to walk that with staff. Is that all you had? That's it? Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good meeting. Thanks.